Good evening. I'd like to call the board meeting for Wednesday, April 12th, 2017 to order. Can we have a roll call, please, Mr. Alexandrovich?
Yes. Mr. Gamble.
Here.
Mr. Nielsen.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mrs. Larson.
Here.
Mrs. Evans.
Here.
Mrs. Witkowski.
Here.
And I am here.
Thank you. The meeting has been properly posted and we have a quorum. Please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Item four is community comment. Do we have any community comment tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on to item five, consent agenda. Would any board member like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Item six is school board announcements. Do we have any announcements?
They conclude, I'll have announcement regarding the musical, Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat, concluded this past weekend. Hopefully you guys had a chance to see it. It was well done. I'm very interested to see how they did on the Tommy Awards this year. I don't know when that, those results come out, but they hit it out of the park last year and then this can be kinda, set the bar kinda high, but it was well done. Congrats.
Do we have attendance numbers on that? Who would know that? Okay. Also, I will be attending the foundation meeting tomorrow. Been awhile since they met, so I also am sending around the event, so let me know later if you're interested.
How many people do you need for a team?
Up to six, but we need, you know, as much brain power as we can muster here, so much trivia you got in your head, you could use it all.
Okay.
I think we should go at six. We'll find intelligent people anywhere we can find them. But don't count on these.
I'm not sure if the administration has seen WASB for their state convention in January's sending around request for students from our district to participate at the convention and I just think we have so much talent in our district. I just think it'd be really great if we could send some art or our music or our video, someone from video there, if we could try to put something together. I just, it's just nice to have representation, so I thought I'd mention that. Any other announcements?
I had the pleasure of going to the high school between seven o'clock and noon. I sat in on two, four, six, eight different classes, ranging from seeing an assessment in action to seeing the workshop model. I sat in Dr. Crisp's medical interventions, which they talked about some of their shadowing and internships. I sat in Mr. Clark's video production class, including their senior discussion on what they wanted to do for their senior video. Senior Nemovitz, I sat in a gold block, which is kind of a new idea of kind of being a one-on-one mentoring type class. And then I sat in Mr. Doucette's AP US history class. So I had a fantastic experience, I did the same thing at the high school, or at the middle school, and the same thing when I visited Ben Franklin. So I strongly urge every other board member to visit the school that you're liaison for and also take Chris and Nick up on their opportunity, their offer, basically to allow you to view some of the workshop models in action at the middle school and high school. Because it's eye-opening to see how learning has even changed since, from when I graduated high school, to truly how the content to structure of the classrooms has changed. I think it's phenomenal to see our teachers in action. So I mean, I sat through about forty minutes per class and then kind of rotated some of them during, some of the rotations were during normal end-of-period times to walk through the hallways and see the gathering of students during, in the open areas, the main open area in the high school. It was just ridiculously eye-opening to see the building during the day, sit in the classrooms and see the teachers and students in action. So every single teacher that I sat in on, by the time I left, said, "Thank you, please encourage every other board member to sit in their class, so if you have the availability or opportunity, please do so." I think it's ridiculously good opportunity to see, at least what we're hearing in new teaching models and assessments, seeing an assessment in action was actually more valuable than I thought it was going to be. So I would strongly urge each one of you to consider it, if you have the time.
Thanks for sharing that. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you. School board calendar. We have the annual reorganization meeting on April 26th here at the Education and Community Center at six o'clock PM, and a regular board meeting May 10th, 2017, here at the ECC at six o'clock PM. Item eight is the liaison reports. Are there any board liaison reports?
I have one tonight.
Okay, great.
So I met with Chad Nelson, Principal of Robinwood, last Thursday, and I saw Mr. Reuter over there, and I saw Dr. Miller. So that was nice to see them in there, out in the, in the buildings. We took a walk around the school, you know, he was very proud of the building. No, I got there about seven, so it was before any of the, any of the kids were there. But I know one of the things that he talked about is that they're using anchor charts in the classroom, like the flipboards, instead of using the smart boards necessarily or just narrating, because then the teachers can present the lesson plan for the day and put those anchor charts up in the wall and the kids can refer back to it as they do their work, which allows the teachers, it frees them up to get with those students that maybe may need more individualized learning. And so that allows for targeted instruction. So that was one of the, one of the things that Chad wanted me to say. We talked about the feedback that he gets at the district level. I have spoke very highly of the directors that we have in place, and that, he said he indicated that over the years he had more, or at least recently had more communication with the directors than necessarily Dr. Pat's. And so a lot of that came from you guys, and so he appreciates you taking the time and challenging his thinking there. Educator effectiveness is a, is a good tool, he likes using that one, and the observations that he gets gives him good feedback. One of the things that he would like to see continue as we move toward selecting a new superintendent is to continue to see a strong focus on universal instruction. And one of the metrics that they use for, I asked him, "How do you, how do you determine how well you're doing?" And he said, "One of the metrics is very data-driven, and of course we've all heard that at the board level, how you guys dive into the numbers like you do, the forward exam better than the Badger exam, that and the SLOs." And again, my note here was feedback from Nick and Chris on testing data is very helpful. Some of the superintendent characteristics, we talked about that a little bit, being visible in the buildings, and then someone who challenges thinking. And then we had, one of the last comments we had and discussions we had was actually on Common Core. I had gotten a question from one of the constituents before the election about Common Core, and of course we haven't heard really anything about that come up in awhile. So I asked him to explain to me a little bit or what, how he would answer that question. And he said it's more described as what the kids should be expected and know as they progress throughout the grades, and that it's comparable at each level, from like district to district, or actually ideally almost state to state, the way it was set up. Standards with the progression of expectations and proficiency at each grade level, and ultimately what it means to be college and career-ready. Having the kids be able to take what they've learned and apply it to problem-solving rather than memorizing facts for a test. And I had made the comment that kids today are doing much more critical thinking than we've, than we did when we were in school, when I was in school. I mean, you memorize facts, you take a test, fill in the blank. He says, "Parents are coming in asking for like study guides and things like that. You can't study for an FRQ necessarily, you don't have, it's just different." And so, but I think it's amazing what the kids are learning and how they're able to apply it to what's going on in the world today. And so, so it was a great meeting. And actually I said, "Well, sorry I didn't get in here sooner." I mean, and he said, "Well, actually it was probably good that you didn't come in the fall, because then we would have been talking about all the things we were going to do." And now we were able to talk about all the things we did and how they actually worked out, so. So, yeah, it was a good meeting, so.
Thank you. Any other reports? Okay, thank you. Item nine, reports and presentations. Nine A is the architects report for Forest Park Middle School. Mr. Milton.
We have Nick Kent with us tonight from Plunkett Race such Architects, and he and his team have been working diligently to come up with a design for this building, working with staff on all the different types of rooms, the exterior of the building, and he's here tonight to go over that and show you kinda how the building lays out and how it works for education in the future.
All right. Well, thank you all. It's been awhile since we've seen this group together. As Jim says, we have been very, very busy since November and, you know, big-
Thanks. We don't, we don't do this, obviously, in a vacuum. There's lots and lots of input that comes from, from many, many great minds, and our team extends far beyond just us at PRA. You know, in the room, Jim, Judy, Nick, Chris, Mark Cludier, Aaron King, we're meeting at least every other week in this space to design this building. So what we're gonna walk through tonight is kind of the higher level, how we have organized this building and this, the site, and how it has evolved from what we talked about at the referendum, which is very diagrammatic and very conceptual, down to much more specific responses to the needs that have been, that have been identified, not just for today, but for years into the future. And as we look at some of the spaces and how we've organized some of the spaces in the interior of this building, it's, it's, it's a little bit different than, certainly than what you're, what you have today in your group of hexagons out here on the site. But it's even a little bit different than what others are doing, in a very good way. So just, that's what we're gonna do tonight, we're gonna kinda talk high-level organizational stuff. I know we've talked in the past about some exciting virtual reality walkthroughs of this building, we're going to do that, but we need to kind of talk about big level, high level organization first. And probably the next time we all get together, we're gonna have some fun with 3D glasses and actually walk through this building and see what it looks like. So let's start first on the outside of the, of the building. And thinking way back, way back five months ago to pre-referendum days, when we just had a big green square, kind of a red blob floating out there in our, in our existing building on the site, there were some things that we had identified on that, that site plan and that concept that have proven to be very, very accurate. And some of the big organizational ideas that we had at that time are still here. Now this may look different than what we had talked about when it was a very simple concept, but really the big idea is very much here and intact. You know, just to orient everybody on the site, of course, in the upper left-hand corner, that's, that's where we are tonight, that's the administration building with its existing parking lot. Down in the lower left-hand corner of the site where you see the outlines of two future soccer fields, that's the current Forest Park Middle School, and you'll see that kind of dashed, I think I can see my little cursor, yeah, there we go. You can see dashed in here, that's, that's the footprint of the existing school. And then this, this big red object up here, that's new, Forest Park, Forest Park Middle School, so right where we had anticipated it all along. Some things that we have developed as part of the normal course of, of site development and design are specific locations of where we can and cannot build on the site. There are areas that, no surprise to anyone, are swampy, we have wetlands on the site, and that's what these dash lines are, that you'll see kind of wrapping around the site. These are areas that are delineated wetlands, and per the DNR and per the city of Franklin, there are setbacks and buffer zones associated with each one of them. So as we start to look at those spaces on the site, along with where the existing building is and how we keep the existing building up and operational while we create this one, it really starts to define where we can and can't build on the site. And that does have some impact on the shape of the building. So the shape, as you see, is by no means arbitrary. It has site, it's driven by site constraints, and it's driven by some of the programmatic and interior, internal organizational items that we'll look at in a minute. Most notably, keep this in mind, is this wetland right here and its setbacks. So that has an impact on how we shape the building itself. From a functional standpoint, we still have our drive-in, we would love to have an additional access point out on the Forest Hill, but we are restricted. We can only keep one access point onto our site. What we are doing is increasing the size of this significantly, so in essence it's doubling in size. So you'll have two lanes, two lanes in and two lanes out, so we'll have a divided boulevard accessing the site. The organization of the district administration building remains as-is, and what we've done here is create two separate traffic loops. We're separating the parent drop-off traffic from the bus drop-off traffic. Unfortunately, everybody has to enter the same spot, that's a restriction of the site that we have. Parents will come in the site, sort of as they do today, they'll drive down this driveway and they'll loop around, and this is intentionally a long drive for parents. We know that lots of cars come and queue up, particularly at the end of the day. We have lots of vehicles coming onto the site to wait for their students to come out. This provides a lot of curb lane with sidewalk wrapping around this entire drop-off. So this is where parents will come. No buses will be in this loop at all. This wraps around a large parking lot. We see this parking lot primarily as an event space parking lot, and we'll talk about how the parking is organized here in a minute. The buses, the buses will come in this driveway as well, but they will hang a left and they actually get the inner loop of the building. We're giving the buses priority loading zones right at the front door of the building. The front door of the building is right here, facing towards the west. So the buses will have their own drop-off and pickup lane, so we have space in here for twenty-nine buses to queue up through this loop. So this will be at the end of the day, this is where all the buses will park. No parents will come through this space. Visitors who come to the school, who are not parents, who are not buses, they will come down this drive, just like everybody else, and they will hang a left into a visitor parking lot here. This parking lot does not interact, the traffic flow does not interact with the bus drop-off, so visitor parking is completely separate. The third parking lot over here on the east side of the site, this is what we're envisioning as the primary staff parking lot. So we see most staff parking towards the backside of this building and accessing the building through another entry that we'll look at here in a minute. General organization of the building, before we jump inside. This end of the building is actually this shape right here. This is the gymnasium, so this is our large event space. So for large events happening here, concerts, plays, other events, this is where the bulk of your people will be coming in. That's why we have this large parking lot down here and this parking lot in this space. These two spaces also serve the green area, these two playfields, potentially multiple playfields. These are two high school-sized soccer fields that we played out here, not that high school necessarily would be playing or practicing here, but those are the largest-sized athletic fields that we would put on here. This likely will be striped with all different sizes of soccer fields and other athletic pieces as time goes on. So this parking organization serves two functions. One, it serves the green space and the civic functions, the school functions that happen out on the site, but it also serves as, as event parking for the larger areas in the building. Some of the other things that you see on the site, this lighter red area, that's space for future gym expansion. So we'll look at what the gym looks like here in a minute, but there is space reserved and planned on the site, if and when additional athletic space might be needed. We don't want to build ourselves into a corner on the site. There is also space designed in the building for vertical expansion for additional classrooms, and we'll look at that inside in a minute. This driveline going around, this is our fire access lane, that will be for fire trucks only, it's not dissimilar from what is out on the site today, wrapping around the building. And then we do have some hard play space to the north side of the building for students to, to use after, after their lunch periods. And then wrapping the entire site is preserved greenland, green space, of course. Franklin does have some pretty strong green space requirements that we do need to meet. So while the space of the site looks, looks huge and looks very empty, in reality we've maxed out this parcel of land between the wetlands that we're restricted from building on and the green spaces that we are required to maintain, we have programmed just about every square foot of the site for, for its utilization. One last detail before we jump inside the building, maybe two. This is where we're envisioning bike parking up here, so students who do approach the school or arrive at the school by bike, coming down Forest Hill, we'd love to see lots of them. I know the reality is there aren't all that many, but we do have bike parking accommodated towards the front of the building in a highly visible space. And the last, last detail, because it is important, where, where we have deliveries and pickups. The back end of the building here, this zone is where we have our loading dock and service facilities for the building, so food deliveries would come here, other deliveries coming to school would come to the back of this building and stay away from where the students are during the day. This is also where our trash recycling enclosure would be, so all those kind of utilitarian vehicles coming to the site will be back here in this area where only staff will, will really be accessing the site. Any questions on the site before we jump inside?
What's the big green space on the lower right?
The space?
Yeah.
That's forest land, so if you look that way, there are a lot of trees out there.
Okay, but is that available for building on or don't, won't we be allowed to take the trees down?
No. The city has very specific tree requirements and forestation preservation requirements, so we are required to keep those. We are taking some of the trees down, and because the tree line right now is roughly here on the site. So to build our parking, we do have to remove some of them to fit that in, so we have to maintain it.
Okay.
That's where there's currently a lot of outdoor learning spaces too, right? The paths and everything are back there?
There are. There's some, there's some paths through there, I guess.
Is it the visitor spaces, is that about ten?
Uh, no, actually the visitor spaces are thirty-five, I believe, in this space. This whole thing is, is visitor spaces.
Question, the number of playfields, how's that compared to what we have now?
Um, it's a little bit smaller than what you have now in total, total green space.
And is that green space up to the left there, is that also trees?
This, this is trees and wetland, this is actually delineated wetland.
Oh, it is.
We can't, yeah, unfortunately we can't touch, we can't touch that space. Okay? Let's take a look inside. And we can go back to these as you have other questions. So here's our building. So again, just to put everybody back in the same context, Forest Hill is here, north is up, here's that wetland that we talked about on the east end of the site, starting to come in. Here's the south wetland, starting to creep its way onto, onto the image as well. And here's the front door of the school, right here. So that, that visitor parking and the bus loop that we were just talking about sits right, right here. What you see on this image are, I, we hesitate to call them departments, they're really different space typologies and functions that happen within them, but each color represents a different group of functions that happen within the building. The first group, this red group on the upper corner, that is our administration and people services block. That's the front, the front of house, if you will. So this building has a true secure entrance, like you have at the high school building, what you do not have at the current middle school building. So visitors arriving at the building will come in and have to check through the office just like they do at the high school. So the flow through that space will seem very familiar to you all when that is, that is done, it will be very much like, like the high school. Generally, this block is organized by administrative functions here on the corner, with principal's office right here in the corner, so administration can keep an eye on her from the district building over here. We have fun with Aaron on that one. And this is people's services, so our guidance counselors will be occupying this end of the building, this is more of the student, student counseling end. This large yellow space in the middle of the building, this is a space that when we come back next time and we get to see this thing in 3D, this is a very exciting space that we're developing. This, this is the welcoming heart of the building. When you walk in these front doors, and most students will, we hope, come by bus and will enter in these front doors, will walk into a very large, day-lit, two-story space, that is the student commons. So that is what was formerly known as cafeteria, this is now a very much re-envisioned space that, yes, it is the cafeteria, it is where students go during three periods of the day to eat lunch, but when it's not being used as a cafeteria, it is envisioned as a group learning space, it's a flexible space. So we're driving the utilization of this large block of real estate far beyond what a traditional cafeteria does. When you walk through this space, you'll see some, some table layouts in here. At the end of the space is a learning stair, and it's like what you have at the high school on the second floor of the cantilever, looking out over the parking lot. The difference here is this stair is actually facing straight into this commons. When you walk into the building, you will actually see this grand element right in front of you, a space that we hope to have, be very active with students learning, teachers engaging, things happening on those stairs. Let's move to the south a little bit. South of the commons, this big gray block, that is our serveri and kitchen area. So we have a very large kitchen space that is, is completely self-sufficient. So this kitchen is not dependent upon the high school for any of its storage, food prep. It is capable of serving upwards of thirteen-hundred-and-fifty students ultimately when this building is completely built out. Six serving lines will serve it, so you see this, these areas in here, these U shapes, each one of those is two, two separate serving lines. So traffic flow through this space will be significantly improved from where we are in the current, the current middle school. To the south, moving on down this corridor, this purple block, those are our performing arts spaces, so those are our music rooms and band rooms along with practice rooms. Again, think similar to the high school in terms of organization, it is a music wing serving the middle school students. A little bit different from the high school, we're designing the instrument storage to be completely out of the rooms, which does happen at the high school, but this is going to be a little bit more integrated into the feel of that space. So this will act as somewhat of a forecourt to the three music, large music practice spaces surrounding it. The block of green, right in the middle, as I pointed out in the site plan, that's our gymnasium. So this is our three-station, three-competition court gymnasium with room someday to expand to a fourth court. The lines that you see here, these are our bleachers that pull out of the walls. And fixed bleachers, we have right now a capacity of about a thousand on fixed bleachers between the two sides. The third court on the end of the space has two banks of movable bleachers. Each one of those movable banks is about fifty people seated, so you have seating capacity right now in the space of about eleven-hundred people on bleachers. That's before you ever put a chair on the floor of that space. So this is, this is a very nice athletic space, divisible by curtains, so each of those three courts has a curtain that drops down. So if you're in tournament format, you can actually run three separate, three separate games simultaneously within the space. Serving that athletic, or that gym space are of course locker rooms, so we have a men's and women's locker room serving that space with coaches, PE lockers in between. Adjacent to it is a health classroom, a dedicated health classroom, so when those courses are offered, this is where those students will come. And at the end of that block is our fitness room, so it is directly adjacent to the gymnasium. So all of our PE athletic functions are housed down here in the south, the south wing of this building. Going back up to the commons, let's make our way into the rest of the building. There are essentially three wings functionally to this building that radiate out from a central node in the building. And that central node has different, somewhat different functions, but interrelated functions between the first floor and the second floor. This tan box that you see right here in the middle of the building is actually our space, our fab lab, our creator space, the space, I guess we used to call tech ed. And Nick can probably talk for hours about what's going on in that space. Nick has been instrumental in helping us sync up the design of this space with what he's working on at the high school as well, so there's a continuity between the two buildings. This space is envisioned as a very flexible space that will serve the programming needs of today, but also for what, what's happening tomorrow. And it is actually directly linked, it's hard to see in this image, but this is actually an internal stair that will link up to an engineering lab that you'll see on the second floor. So we're literally trying to tie the functions, the, the idea of design, engineering, and head skills with hand skills, and link those things literally through space, vertically through the building. Adjacent to that- Adjacent to that, and in general on the first floor, this vertical access, the north wing and the south wing are our specials. This, these are where our specials happen in the building beyond the, the creator spaces. This is our culinary arts, our, our face program located down here in two rooms that can be joined together into one large room or operate as two separate, independent learning spaces. So that too is, is very flexible and we'll see, next time we're together, some more details of how this, this pieces together. But this is very much more designed around the mindset of culinary arts and celebrating those nutritional pieces in food preparation than the current spaces are at, at Forest Park Middle School. The north wing of the building, this is where we start to move into our art studios and our business studios. We do spill out a little bit down towards the commons. This is one of our business studios here. So these are our art labs moving up the building. And then finally, when we get to the end of this, these six blocks here, these are actually typical classrooms in the building. So you have some flexibility in the future, but right now they're being programmed as the world languages. So this is where our world languages will be located, all six of them clustered around this end of the building in these breakout spaces. And then right in between, these are where our, some of our special education rooms are. Each wing has its own special education space as well as a calm room, a space for not just special education students, but any, frankly, any student or staff member that may need just a place to go and, and, and just cool it for a few minutes. We've designed these spaces intentionally to be dispersed around the building, so we don't have to bring any student all the way through the building down to a dedicated space. However, down at this end of the building is where we do have our OTPT spaces, our sensory rooms, our spaces that for students who might need a little bit more intense level of, of help. This is where they are located. So that's the specials on the first floor. And that takes us to what is, I'll call a typical wing, they're fairly similar as we move through the building. We are thinking the building will be organized by grade level, by wing, but it, the building does not dictate that. The building can be organized and classrooms reassigned however the district wants to in the future. You could organize by discipline, you can organize by grade, you could organize by house, however you want to organize this, this space. So this is a fairly typical wing that you'll see in the building. The idea being you walk through a set of doors, so each wing can be locked off from that central, that central core of the building. And what you'll come into immediately are the science labs. And the science labs are intentionally located towards the center of the building to establish a relationship to this maker space and this creator space in the heart of, the heart of the building. So we're trying to foster a sense of collaboration between these spaces that are science labs and these spaces that are more innovator, ideation type spaces. Coming down the corridor, you'll see toilet rooms, there's a group of toilet rooms, not, not all exciting, but important in each one of these wings. And then you'll get to our, our typical classrooms, align this large breakout space. And that hallway does, does flare, that's not, those aren't, walls that aren't drawn parallel to each other. That space does open up and the, it's, that's intentional to create a sense of, of volume of space and also to differentiate what's happening towards the end of each one of these wings as something that's not a hallway. It's actually a learning space that supports the classrooms that, that surround it. And then this dark blue space right in the middle, that was that special education room that will happen in each one of these wings along with its own calm room, right here. Stairways at the end of each tower or at the end of each wing, one here, one here, one here, and then our grand learning stair right in the center of the building. That is the first floor. This is the second floor. So the second floor is smaller than the first floor. So all of this white space that you see down here, this is either two-story space, like the gymnasium or the student commons, or it is roof space. Here, when you come up those, so here are those learning stairs, again, coming up from that student commons below, this is all open. So this is what that central collaboration space becomes on the second floor. And this is really the IMC, what we've known as the IMC in the past, this is where it's located. This is where the stacks of books that we do still have in that space will go. But this is an open space. This is a space that is centered on all of these classrooms and learning spaces to be highly accessible and highly flexible. So it can be turned over and utilized for any number of purposes. And one of the things that struck us is we've been in the school and seen it in, in operation many times that we've had meetings in the space is what happens in the IMC is typically large group, large groups gathering and learning in that space. So we've designed this space really to, to support that. It's not there by default, it's there because this is a great space to meet and to collaborate. And here is that engineering lab that I talked about, right here. So this is that glass-walled, highly innovative collaborative space that physically links down to those shops, to those maker spaces down below. So again, as we see the science labs on each one of these wings here and here, we're hoping that the learning, the teaching and learning spills from these corridors right into this collaboration space, into this engineering lab, and then physically down these stairs. So we have this flow of space and teaching and learning, and we removed as many of those physical barriers as we can from the building to allow this to happen seamlessly. So just like we saw downstairs, these wings are, are the same, science labs and typical classrooms down the end, same breakout space in the middle, same special ed room here. In this wing of the building, it's just a little bit larger of a space, but it's a very similar layout with four science labs wrapping around the end of this wing and then eight classrooms down towards the end. These two little boxes that you see at the end of each one of those wings, those are those project rooms. And I think we've talked in the past about flexible learning spaces and, and breakout spaces and, and how they're supported. And those are what we call project rooms. So those are about 250 square feet each, they're glass-fronted and have exterior windows. And those are those small spaces where small groups can go to learn, project-based learning can happen in there, students, teachers can check them out. Say for a week at a time, if there's a project that they're doing that needs to stay set up and undisturbed, there are any number of functions. There are also conference rooms to be used when not occupied. This is very analogous to what we do and what we see in design of corporate spaces and the way office spaces are now designed where there are, they're touchdown rooms or sometimes called huddle rooms. So we're, we're kind of adapting that idea of flexible, adaptable learning spaces into the, into the world of K-12 schools. So last thing I want to point out, and then we'll, we'll have some, some Q and A, expansion of the school. This building is designed for expansion, depending on whenever that happens, maybe sooner rather than later. This piece of the building, this is a one-story piece, so this, these would be the spaces right over the, the face of the culinary arts rooms. Part of the kitchen is below this and part of the maker spaces below this. This roof in its initial design is actually pre-cast concrete plank. It's designed as a floor for the proper loadings of the floor, and the structure is designed to vertically expand. So this area actually allows us to add that third wing onto the building on the second floor. Basically add 10 more classrooms to the building and associated breakout spaces in the middle with project rooms. So we're effectively able to add a whole nother wing onto this building, and the structure is designed to, to accommodate it whenever in time that might, that might happen. So, that's hopefully a brief summary of what we have been discussing and working through over the last few months. And I think it's fair to say that every one of these rooms and every one of these spaces, we've had hours of discussion about making sure that the size is right, the location is right, the organization of these spaces is right. Again, not just for today, but allowing the district the flexibility to reorganize this building in the future. So we don't sit there and look at, ask why did we build five hexagons linked with bridges in the future? So, that's my-
Do you have a rendition of the front of the building yet?
Stereo elevation.
We, we do, we do. We're gonna, um, next time we get together, we're gonna go through all the design, the exterior of the building and the interior of the building. Kind of want to talk organization, and then we'll get through the exterior.
So how many classrooms do you have planned right now? General classrooms, not assigned to-
Total number of rooms, uh-
Not heard, not music, not-
I can count them up for you. I don't have the number off the top of my head, unless you happen to, Chris. Let's see. Four, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, eighteen. Twenty-eight, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-two, thirty-four, thirty-six, thirty-eight, forty, forty-two, including the six that are world language.
As well as science questions.
As well as science.
Which are designated only for science because they're outfitted with sinks.
Also, it's forty-two, including science and world language.
Six world language. Which are typical classrooms.
So with the three grade levels and you have four wings, what is the thought on how initially you would organize grade levels?
There are three wings, so there would be-
Two wings.
Yeah. So that on the main floor, there's an encore wing, but if you're talking core classrooms, there's three wings for core instruction. So hypothetically, the top wing, we're on the second floor right now, the-
Right.
-north wing could be seventh grade, the south, east wing could be eighth grade, and the bottom floor core area could be sixth grade. That's, you know, hypothetically. And then we have an encore wing and then that central hub, which is all encore area as well.
Oh, so you're saying that-
So the north area, we could say is six, or I'm sorry, the southeast area could be sixth grade, that's first floor hypothetically, because the northern wing there is world language. So that access, that's access for all students. And then on the second floor, Devin, if, I'm sorry, Nick, if you could scroll to that. The north wing, let's say, could be seventh grade and the southeast wing could be eighth grade.
I'm curious on how you got the, the angle, why is it-
Why is it angled?
Yeah.
Hmm.
Because I was envisioning square. Because go ahead. Smoothie. I'm sorry.
Sure. Sure. Well, a couple of things, well, a lot of things really drove us to, to this, this shape. One of them is, is the really critical, I'll say need to get natural light into every room. And in fact, every single room but one in this building has exterior windows. And the only one that doesn't have exterior windows, as soon as my computer catches up, is actually this room right here, which is our digital arts room, which really doesn't want to have windows in it. So the need to bring natural light into virtually every space in the building drives a certain amount of exterior perimeter that we need to have to bring light in. So that kind of sets up how, kind of how much exterior wall we need. And then to organize the exterior wall, if you remember, when we go back to the site, it's really informed by limitations on the site. So we wanted to pull the building back, basically as far as we could from Forest Hill. So I kind of set that location of that wing. As we start to lay out the building, we've got, you know, we're pinched by this wetland down here, we can't build into that space. We can't build into this wetland over here, and we can't build into this wetland over here, which leaves us a space of basically this to work with. So to square off this building would require us to take this wing, basically pull it way down here to make a right angle, which doesn't work well for our internal circulation. And the idea that everything ties back to this hub. So they're kind of exhalts on a wheel, radiating out from that center, that are kind of set in space by the limitations of the site.
Could you go back to that site?
Sure.
Slide again, please, just, um, you've had more meetings on this than, you know, just us sitting here tonight.
Sure.
Just curious, when you said that the reason why you got the parking lot so big in the south is, you know, you, you mentioned the plays, you mentioned the concerts. Well, actually, both of those would be at the high school. So I'm just thinking the biggest event that would have, that would be in the gymnasium would be maybe our eighth grade graduation. And so did you give any consideration as to maybe that parking lot wouldn't need to be that big and we could get more green space on the south side of the building?
Just to interject, I know that there, for basketball games and for additional tournaments potentially ho, housed, hosted by the middle school like they do at Ben Franklin and some of the elementary schools during the weekends. I know for a fact, obviously, having grown up near Ben Franklin and played in basketball games, that there, even the parking lot at Ben Franklin isn't large enough for some of the basketball games. So knowing that there's potential thousand-seat basketball court here and hosting additional sports, volleyball games, basketball games.
Wrestling, right.
Wrestling, indoor soccer, that was huge.
So there's a lot more going on in the gym space then?
Right.
Okay.
They're in sixth grade, co-curricular too, so it's a whole nother population of families and transportation.
We, we also did think about weekend soccer games, you know, right now they're, it's, it's a city concern, but they are, they have expressed it, I think, every time we've talked to them. How much parking will happen on Forest Hill and they want parking off of Forest Hill. In fact, when you look at the city's minimum parking requirements, there, there's actually a minimum and a maximum parking that we can provide on this site. And they're not, there's only a 10% difference between the two. So this is, this is only slightly beyond what the minimum parking is, really.
Are the hallways any wider than they are right now?
Oh, yes. Yes. Let me jump back to the floor plan here. Just, it, it's, it's very hard, and hopefully when we look at this in, in virtual reality, one, hopefully nobody gets sick because it's somewhat disorienting. But two, you'll get a sense of the scale of this building. This is a big building. This hallway is 20 feet wide. This is a very large hallway. The smallest hallway in this building is 12 feet wide. It's, it's, that, that's not including the lockers. This is, this is a big building.
Where would those go?
Lockers?
Yes.
Um, well, interesting question. So that's, that's actually a, a bit of a challenge in more modern school design, which, we'll talk about this a little bit more when we get into your finishes and design. But virtually, well, every one of these classrooms has glass fronts to it, so similar to what you have at your high school. That's great, it increases visibility and connection to those breakout spaces, but it also eliminates a lot of places for us to put lockers in this building. So the lockers are kind of all over the place in the building. There are some, you'll see these little, these little dots, those are banks of about seven lockers. Where the bulk of our lockers actually go are down here in these, these corridors, kind of these internal, these internal hallways. It, it is a little bit of a balance that you have to strike between, say, the convenience of students getting to their lockers quickly versus the flexibility and openness and the collaboration of the spaces where they spend most of their time. And our, our bias thus far has been to make the spaces as open and transparent and flexible as possible, somewhat at the sacrifice of the convenience of kids getting to their lockers very quickly.
But the area you pointed to for the lockers is only one floor. So anybody on the second floor is really pretty far away.
This is true, this is true. To locate over 1,200 lockers in this building and have lots of glass and visibility is, is a challenge.
Is there a concern or a thought process that we might not need lockers? At the point where we're not having course books, everyone has a laptop.
Yeah.
Normally, at least what I saw in the high school, everyone carries around a backpack, a backpack with their laptop in the backpack. Most of them were wearing jackets, so whether or not people were actually dropping stuff off at a locker was a question.
We, we have had that, we've had quite a few locker conversations. And while we recognize the need, there still is a need for lockers and fortunately our-
Or half-locker is something where you could utilize a space a bit more-
We talked about, we talked about that too. We, we've landed on, we still live in a climate that dictates big, heavy, bulky coats and boots and all the stuff that we have to deal with. And that really drives the size of the lockers more so than storing books in those lockers. What we are very cognizant of is the depth of the locker to put Chromebooks in and whether or not kids should or shouldn't or what policy ultimately exists. We want, we don't want to design ourselves into a place where you can't put in a Chromebook or a device like that in that locker space. But to your point, we've had that conversation where basically kids are utilizing their lockers less and less. They're not going to their locker every, between every class period. So our group's discussion has been, it's probably a better choice to bias towards getting our learning spaces right and put the lockers that are being used less and less- spaces right, and put the lockers that are being used less and less in a less convenient space. That's kind of our discussion thus far.
The only other thought I had is, obviously, it's, it's relevant in some of the new stories too, is in situations of lockdown, having a large area of the classroom being all glass, um, being a security concern. But additionally, are, are there going to be additional steps for, you know, reinforcing doors, having, um, additional, you know, locking capabilities other than just a lock and a handle? Um, have we thought about the, you know, situations where you might need to have curtains or shades or ability to?
We, we've had those, we've had some of those discussions. And that's, that's, that's a very typical question, um, to ask, because for a long time, um, the, the talk around security was, was shelter in place. Um, and that's where, um, in the event of some terrible happening, that's, you stay in place until security, till the law enforcement comes and clears the building. What we've actually had discussions, um, not just here, but in, in, in many municipalities, is that can become a, a problem in its own right, that, um, not only can, um, bad guys not see or get to the kids, but law enforcement can't either. And it takes them that much longer to clear a building. So, um, I don't know that there is a, a right or wrong answer to this question of glass versus no glass. It's one that we, we've had, have discussed. Um, this has been reviewed by, by the police department, um, from a, a layout standpoint, and they're, they're happy with it. All classroom doors will have typical, you know, security classroom lock sets. We have solid doors, um, on each classroom. We do have compartmentalization in the building, and maybe to talk a little bit about that, you'll see on this plan, and maybe you can't because it's really tiny, um, little doors, um, here locking off each one of these wings, even locking off, call it this, the sub area of this public space, um, from the front area of the public space. These are all, um, capable of being tied to a security system that can go into lockdown.
A central.
You hit a panic button, those doors slam shut and lock. So, um, if something happens, um, in the most likely case, you can never design for every possible scenario, but the most likely case is something starts here, um, in the front office. When you go into lockdown mode, you hit a panic button, these doors slam shut and lock. So if something were to propagate out from that, that front door, um, there's only so far that a perpetrator can get into the building, um, before they meet with a door and they're slowed down. So we are putting those measures, um, into the, into the building design.
Have, have you thought of using something like polycarbonate versus glass?
We have. Um, there are some challenges, uh, with that, and we, we've done that successfully in other buildings. I think we'll probably have more discussions around that. Um, that's typically done, in our experience, um, in higher secu- highest security areas where most likely occurrence of something like that would happen. And that would be in the front office area. It's not inexpensive, um, to locate that around. And there are, um, long-term maintenance considerations with it. Um, it can be etched, it, it's easier to scratch, uh, than, than true glasses. It can be damaged with the wrong cleaning products, um, where glasses, glasses blast.
Yeah, but it will stop a bullet too.
It will stop a bullet, and that's where we have done it. Um, call it, you know, again, for, for better or worse, um, the reality is, the front office is the front line, um, in the school, and that's where we have, we have done it in other buildings. And that's something that we have, um, we have been discussing, potentially doing that up front.
When we first saw the design, it was a large rectangle. I seem to have lost the rectangularness of it. How did this whole thing evolve?
Sure. It, it evolves, um, as I, you know, as I previously, previously described, with a desire to get natural light, um, into every one of these rooms, and that's important. And that kind of drives a certain amount of, of building perimeter. Um, the site constraints, um, drive the shape of it.
It was closer to the road too.
Uh, it was actually a little bit further back from the road, um, in the, in the referendum drawings. We were, if we go back to the site plan. It was actually, um, sort of a rectangular-ish shape that sat right about here. And then this was, I think we even, at one point, we had a little bit of a parking lot in here, and then we took that out and said this was all just green space, um, upwards the front. Um, so we, we were pushed back.
So the cost is still the same?
Mm-hmm, yep, we are, this has been, um, JP Collin, our construction manager, has done a, actually very detailed, uh, cost takeoff, um, from our schematic design documents. Thirty pages of, of detail that they've taken off. And this is within our, within our budget, with our contingencies intact, with our FFNE, our furniture, our equipment budget, all intact. So we are, we are, we're on, we're on track with this.
Cause I really liked the layout, I just didn't, it's really different, that's all.
It, it is. Um, you know, some of it, and this is kind of a natural evolution of, of design, you know, and some of the things that, as, as we, as we worked with our team and established the program and how these spaces want to interact with each other, um, some things evolved, like, um, even, even kind of kinking the gym wing, um, off of the main building. Um, that was a bit of an evolution. One of the things we struggled with earlier, early on was, great, we've got, we kind of know where the front of the building is, because the site dictates it. We know we have to get a gym towards this end of the site and have room for, for expansion. Um, we know we're going to have to have wings for classrooms somewhere on this end of the building. Where the heck do you put the kitchen? How do you get food, uh, in and out of that space? And one of the ideas that came up is, what if you take that gym and start to cleave it off of the main building and create this angle? And there was some heartburn, uh, about angles, you know, we won't deny that. Um, we talked a lot about angles and triangles and what, how do those shapes resolve themselves.
Questioning the angles.
Yeah.
If you go back to the site.
Sure.
I'm not a bus driver, but you've got to really crank that bus around or get it back. Don't you?
No, cause remember, you're coming way over here and making this turn.
Is that probably, okay, looks difficult for me. All right.
So that, that's kind of, a lot of, a lot of factors really drive the, the angles, of the building. One of the things that we, we did hold fairly sacred, we are holding sacred, is, you'll notice the classrooms themselves do not have angles, um, in them. And one of the things that we know doesn't work at the current middle school is the angles in those classrooms. So, um, we, we were very careful, uh, to make sure that all of our primary learning spaces are, are rectilinear spaces, and very flexible.
One question, um, moving this forward, so what are we, how are we looking for bid packets and timing and?
Sure.
And, um, I know we wanted to wait till school was out before.
Start moving.
Heavy equipment, what are we looking at?
Yeah, uh, so the first bid package, um, is, is actually set to come out with, within a month, and that's, that's site work. Um, so that's all the earth-moving stuff, uh, curbs, gutters, parking lot stuff. Um, that will come out once we get through the city, um, process. So we are in the midst of that. In fact, uh, Jim and I just got the, the first round of city staff comments today. Um, generally, it's, it's, it's good, it's manageable, um, but we have to work through their process. Um, so once that's done, we actually have a May fourth, uh, plan commission meeting, um, that we will be presenting at. Um, once we get kind of the city racing on this, that bid package will come out. That sets us up for, uh, start of work in June, um, on the site. Um, so groundbreaking would be somewhere in the early part of, of June, and mobilization would be, um, basically at the time the kids are out of school. So we are tracking right on, um, from the schedule, uh, that we had laid out early on for a building delivery, uh, turnover, uh, probably by, um, Thanksgiving of twenty eighteen, and then a student occupancy by the second semester of, of eighteen, nineteen school year. So, um, to the bid pa- the bid package question though, um, three bid packs is what we're planning on for this building. The first one, uh, being, uh, the site work, the second one following, very shortly on its heels, that's, uh, basically the building, um, what we sometimes call core and shell, uh, in the building world, that takes the building to a white, white box, another industry term, um, state. So it's all the exterior walls, um, the structure, the mechanical systems of the building, but not the interior finishes. And the last, uh, package which would come, um, in early fall will be all the interior finishes of this building, the furniture, um, all the pieces that go into the building last. And so that's, that's, uh, in a nutshell, the schedule that we're tracking on.
How does the house concept fit also? If, how do you run that over this layout?
And so if we look at the southeast corner wing, um, we have three science rooms as you enter that wing. So those could be a, a red house, a white house, a blue house, science room. As you progress down, those are all learning spaces, so they could service either math, literacy, or social studies. So you would have a contained seventh grade, let's say, house right there, and you just differentiate the classrooms by discipline. You could have all literacy side by side by side, or you could have a house, red house. Let's say, uh, the northwest corner, science room, followed by a math classroom, that could be seventh grade, red house math, followed by seventh grade social studies, red house. So however you want to configure internally, but because they're a wing of a grade level, you can determine a house system by the layout. The only permanent rooms are the science rooms in the core academic area, again, because of the outfit of science labs space.
So the house isn't really physically defined, it's just how you organize, organizationally group.
Correct, similar to what we currently have.
Oh, you do that, okay.
Kids identify to a house, but they're in the seventh grade wing.
Oh, okay.
Or sixth grade wing.
And what are those white spaces to the, um, that's, the gym there?
These?
Yes, and there's also some along the other side, right?
Um, these are incoming electrical, incoming water, um, they're mechanical spaces coming into the building. Um, just as long as we're down here in the center of the building, um, one detail, these, uh, locker rooms actually have direct access to the, uh, outside. So, uh, when kids do go down to the playfields that are down here, they don't have to track mud all the way through the building. They can go right back into the locker room, keep the must, the mess contained, um, in that space. Oh, one other thing I, I forgot to point out, when we're talking about how the building is loaded, we talked about buses dropping off here, parents dropping off here. So we're actually seeing this entrance here as, um, parent drop-off entrance. So we actually split the streams of students, parent drop-off students come in this way, and bus drop-off parents or students come in this way, and all meet in the middle. So we're operating two entrances at the beginning of the day to bring, to ease that traffic congestion.
Is there a staff space? Like a, the old teacher's lounge?
Yes, we, we have, we have two, actually. We have, um, we don't call it the teacher's lounge, um, anymore, it's.
Pass only.
Collaboration area, whatever our term is today. Um, there's one right here, um, for the staff, and then, um, upstairs, whoops. And then upstairs, we've created, um, a smaller one, and, um, we've had a lot of discussions about these spaces too. Um, we, in fact, at one point, we even talked about, what's, what's the function of these? Do we need them in this building? And one of the things that we've talked about is, is the desire to keep these rooms as clean and flexible as possible. So we're, we, you, the district, will, um, encourage, uh, teachers to not bring microwaves, coffee pots, refrigerators, all these things into the rooms. That's what these staff, these staff spaces are for. We acknowledge that there is a need for people to put lunches somewhere, to heat up lunches, to have coffee. Let's give them a proper place. It's not a lounge for people to go and sit for two hours at a time, but a place to put those, those necessities.
If you go, if you go back to the first floor.
Yeah.
Rendering, the staff entrance is the entrance southeast to the gym.
Yep, yep, they'll, um, they'll be coming in, um, either this door, um, or they can come in this door through the back.
And I'm inclined to ask this question solely because I don't know whether or not it was asked forty years ago, um, but with the old octagonal pod shaped, that was obviously a design at the time that was seen as useful. Um, I obviously see the use in these wings. Forty years from now, let's say there's a referendum that needs to be passed to update this building.
Sure.
Would this drawing, um, architectural drawing render itself to, let's say, an update to increase the size of the building by a thousand students?
By a thousand students?
Yeah, let's say the district explodes and in forty years, they need expansive addition in space. Would this building lend itself to that?
This site will not lend itself to that. You don't have enough site space, uh, to expand that much. Um, so, no, the, the building has a, has a capacity to add on, um, ten more rooms, um, and support spaces for it. And the core spaces are designed to support those, those ten rooms. They're sized bigger than what they need to be for the immediate classrooms.
So potentially the max that this site would ever accommodate would be the, what?
Thirteen fifty to fourteen hundred, yeah. That, that's about where you're going to max out on the site. Um, beyond that, um, you, you, you don't have enough room for parking, you don't have enough room to build, um, bigger commons spaces on this, on the site. You're, you're maxed out.
Thanks.
Just one comment on the locker.
Yeah.
Considering the age level of the kids, they're not high school kids, they're more emotional at that level, I, I guess, the administration will have to use some common sense in letting them go to those areas. I mean, would that be?
Yeah.
The way to go?
We have to remember, we're adding a whole new grade level of, of students. At sixth grade, they come in as fifth graders. Um, lockers are essential, we've determined, even though some kids will wear backpacks. We still have a large population, even of forest park students, that to Nick's point, ride their bikes to school from the Ben Franklin area and walk. And we're walking in, again, we live in Wisconsin, it could snow tomorrow, kids still wear boots, those type of things. So lockers are still an essential aspect.
Like passage times and all.
Oh, for sure.
There'll be some times when you can't be so s- strict, I mean, some kids might have to.
For sure. And you think about your day and how this design is utilized, um, to Ms. Wachowski's question, the house system by wing, or however we configure, you're right there. So if you carry your backpack, you have that. But now I need to go to lunch, I'm not going to carry my backpack or my jacket per se, I will drop that off before I hit the commons area to go outside.
Yeah, that's a great point too, Chris. Um, when you think about it in, in that, um, lights, uh, if in fact that is when kids are most likely to drop things off at their, um, lockers, in fact, these are conveniently located, because they're right between gym, music, and the commons. Um, so they are convenient to those areas of the building.
So we, you know, I don't like that it's not the space where you're kind of, those four classrooms that are angled oddly.
The, the wing?
Yeah, well, both wings have that.
Yeah.
I know you said why you created that, but is there, it just looks like we're trying to get, we're going back to an odd shape that would, ten years from now, make us wonder why.
I, I, just, just to kind of piggyback on, I, I get the odd shape because, although the classrooms are odd shaped, and in this, in, in this instance, the classrooms aren't. And, and I guess, I saw at Ben Franklin specifically, and more so at the high schools, I don't think the middle school has the space, but in instances where kids had to perform a makeup test, or missed a day, had to perform a one-on-one lesson, they actually were performing those lessons in the, um, hallway space, I guess, with a table. Um, and there were two to three students, at least at Ben Franklin, it was utilized quite frequently, where they had individualized one-on-one in the, in the, in the.
I understand.
So I get, like, where there's tables on the bottom, I get that, it makes sense from what I saw in practice.
But just make it straight. I guess, why do we have to get?
You know, you're looking.
You're looking top, you're looking top down too, that's, I mean, you're above this building, that's why you see it. When you're on ground level, you're not going to see that. I mean, I don't, it's, it's pronounced because you're above it.
And it also allows you to keep the classrooms that square rectangular.
No, I'm just moving up right in. Why do we have to be cutesy with the, I'm just saying, ten years from now, we go like.
It looks like somebody from auto shop class thought of a auto spray gun.
I'm just, I'm thinking too, I mean, if you have a seventh grade wing here, um, on the bottom right, and you have four classrooms within a distance of twenty to thirty feet, and you have twenty to thirty kids per classroom, and they're moving in between classes, there's a lot of kids in a space, let's say it's at the end of a hallway, it's quite tight. So I get, I guess, the design of flaring it to allow for.
Right.
Easier access, greater flow for a large amount of students, um, in a small space.
And it also funnels them back to the smaller hallway, which is still a wide hallway, but there isn't a wall.
Right.
That you get thrown into to try and go around it, then. Everything funnels through as the students are moving.
Right. There, there is, um, you know, Linda, to your, your point, we actually did look at.
Just taking that whole wing and.
Right.
Swearing it.
And a couple of things. One, it, it just adds square footage to the building, it just adds more building and more cost. Um, and two, we, we didn't need that much. I mean, our breakouts at one point were, I think we were three thousand square feet for each breakout when we were squared off. That was enormous amount of breakouts, that was too much breakout space. Um, and, and there, there is a certain amount of, um, uh, architectural space forming that. space forming that, that this is doing, that the flare does, it is intentional that when you walk through that space, as, as Jim points out, that you'll walk through that hallway, which is not a small hallway, um, this space here, but we want this to feel a little bit different, um, we want this to encourage, to be a visual cue that this is kind of a space that you want to keep moving through, this is a link between a learning space here and a learning space here, and the flare is a visual cue, an architectural cue, that this space is different, that you walk through and all of a sudden, there's a different movement, a different volume here that you're entering into, now there's furniture, there'll probably be even a shift in, in the tone, the color of that, that room, to announce that, yes, you're still circulating through, but it's not a hallway anymore, this is a learning space in the middle of this. That's how we arrived at the flare.
I agree with Ellen in that I didn't expect this, um, shape, didn't expect this to be the building, but, um, I think it's, I think it's really creative, and, uh, I don't know how unique it is, I haven't seen all the schools in the area, but I would certainly think this has got to be right up there, uh, I like it.
Thank you.
I really do, I can tell, just, you, all your input on everything, um, I'm, I'm impressed, there's a lot of thought that went into it.
Yeah, I think you'll be, I hope you'll all be excited when we look, um, at the aesthetic of this too, the design, it's, um, you know, we, it's, it's easy to think of design as fluff, but it is important, and, and we've, we've had a lot of conversations about, what does this building mean as a civic, as a civic entity, as a, as a building that the district, that the community can be proud of, and even some of the, um, back, back to your question, it's going to be a rectangle, um, there's, there's function to why it, it is this shape, but there's also some design to it, and particularly when we get down to the center of the building, and we start to, we show up, and we, we look at this in three D next time, this is a big building, I mean, we're not going to hide the fact that this is a big building, this is almost two hundred thousand square feet of building that we're going to put out on the site, um, we have to be very careful, inter-residential neighborhood, I mean, you remember, this is, this is a neighborhood full of houses at a completely different scale than this building.
Can you remind me, what's, what's the size of the current building?
A hundred and twenty thousand, I believe, um, so, this building in its context is completely foreign from, in, in scale, so some of the undulations and the movements of the building help to break down that scale, and we're trying to be good neighbors and be part of this, this urban fabric, that frankly, if the, if the city plotted the land again today, they probably would not put a school and, of this size, and houses right next to each other, but be that as it may, we have to work this building, this volume into the context of the city, so there is some of that architectural movement too, in design, and we look next time at the materiality, and how we tried to introduce texture to help break down, and different materials that help break down the masses, particularly at this end of the building where we have an enorm, this is an enormous concrete box, uh, the gym, that's what a gym is, so to break that down and not make it feel like we just dropped, you know, a Walmart here in the middle of, of this neighborhood, that takes some sensitivity, so some of the, the pushes and pulls on this exterior and the angles are also helping with that.
I think the idea of having every classroom having an exterior window is a really good idea, um, knowing the climate that we have in the middle of winter, it is obviously a bit concerning knowing heating costs and everything with windows, uh, and some of the issues we have with the current structure with.
Yeah.
When, inefficient windows, but, um, I think you're talking about twenty, twenty-first century, twenty-second century learning instruction spaces, um, I, I think it's key.
Can you go back to the site map again?
So you're creating that V, um, space there between the two wings, what do you see happening there, yeah, that courtyard-ish thing?
Um, we've, we've talked about that a little bit, um, this is, so right here, um, on the first floor, that's where the, we'll call it the tech ed space is, maker space, um, we've, we've talked about, you know, the opportunities, do we have kind of an outdoor classroom type space here, do we have, um, paved yard area for larger projects, um, in the end, what we've kind of landed on, um, not to say it doesn't change at some point in the future, is, is maintain the green space, you know, the grass, because we do have classrooms here too, that we have to think about, what are those views out of those classrooms, um, but we also have this drive, this is kind of a, a little bit of a service drive, um, to allow materials to be brought up and into, um, that, um, that tech ed space, so right now, it's just green space. Anything else?
How are you connecting the, that play space there with the, the cafeteria, is that intact?
Yeah, um, well, there is an outdoor learning area in here, um, so that, this is a paved area, and we have sidewalks connecting back down along this road to this, we'll call it entry plaza, so this is the door right here, out of the, um, out of the student commons, there's also, if we look back at the commons, you can also go through these doors and out this way, and I should point out too, another layout feature of this building, when you do use this for weekend after-hours events, we have the ability to actually lock off, um, this whole part of the building and the music wing, so we can lock off just this green area and have public access to just that space, with their own, you know, kind of sub-lobby, their own toilet room access here, we can lock it off from the common side, um, and concession stand, um, serving that space, so that can actually function independent, quasi-independent of the entire school building, so, anyway, back to you, Linda, your, your question, students will come out these doors, and probably to a certain degree, these doors and go up to this area, you'll probably also have students, again, however the administration wants to organize, where kids can go, um, either going out these doors or going out these doors to go down to those play fields, um, during lunch, break time.
Did you say there's a concession stand in there?
There is, right here, this is concessions, so, completely separate from the commercial kitchen, which health officials love. So you can serve, you can sell tickets, you can serve concessions, you can run booster events out of the space here, lock it off separate from the commercial kitchen, and it's right outside the doors from, uh, from the gymnasium in this lobby space.
So you don't envision the cafeteria commons spaces available for community events or weekends, it's, because it's really difficult to.
We, we, we do envision that as being available, but we've given you the opportunity to either lock it off or extend the perimeter line, that's why we have doors here as well, so you can grab this space and connect it to this space, or keep them separate. So you have two routes, you've got this kind of sub-lobby space here that links through a series of glass doors into the commons, and there's a back connector through these doors from the gym, back this way into the commons, so you can circulate around, uh, that kitchen space.
But the kitchen space is locked off.
Yep.
But you still have access to those classrooms behind the kitchen?
Yeah, these, these would be locked, um, but yeah, you would walk past those classrooms, but they would be secured, which gives you a great chance to show, show off your culinary arts program.
And the art rooms, are those purple ones up behind the office?
Yep, that's art up here.
And the outside learning space, what is that? That oval, is it a white oval?
The outside learning space, um, is a, it, it's a hard, it's a hard play space, um, really, it would be great, I would love to come back here in five years and see it frequently used, um, all year round, um, the reality is, it, it's a hard play space for, for recess, um, it's there for teachers who want to take their kids out in Wisconsin, as hard as we try, um, it, they are rarely utilized as actual learning classrooms.
It's a playground.
It's a playground.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to call it what it is, it's playground.
Would it have like outdoor seating, like concrete seating?
Yeah, we're talking about some simple benches and things in there, so you could go in. It's a place for kids during lunch to not sit on the curb in the front of the building to congregate and talk, or after school, basketball courts across from it. Sounds better as a learning patio.
Yeah, but I think you need to call it what it is, I mean, just from a, a citizen's point of view, and I'm a teacher, so, I mean, it is what it is, I don't think we have to sugarcoat it.
All right, we'll see you again soon, more fun to come.
Mr. Lewis has left his seat at seven twenty, but he will return, um, so next we'll move on to, um, item nine B, the district health dental and vision insurance renewals, is the possible action item, Mr. Milzer.
Yes, uh, we have, uh, representatives from Horton, our insurance consultants with us, uh, today, we have, uh, Rayanne Bodry and Alex Bodry, uh, giving a presentation on the, uh, information from our insurance bid, um, they'll walk you through the information from front to back and let you know how it went, how it all came together, I would say that we were, uh, really had time constraints from the time that we could get information from our current carrier to use for a bid, get the bids out, get them back, get our renewal numbers, and then go back to all of those folks and ask for reductions, uh, to bring it down to in range where we could afford it, uh, pushed us right up against getting you the information today, so, I apologize for that, but that was kind of how it came about, and they'll, they'll walk through the information for you.
Thank you, do you want me to wait for Mr. Lewis to return, or?
No, that's okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So again, thank you for having us, my name is Alex Bodry with the Horton Group, um, we received your initial renewal from your incumbent carrier, which is WCA, about a month ago, um, it came in at fifteen percent above current, um, obviously, that is something that I don't think the district was prepared to handle, so right away, we went back to the incumbent carrier and asked for what we call plan increments or plan design changes to reduce that renewal liability, and we also immediately went out to the market, um, to be fair to WCA, um, it was not an unreasonable renewal, we have a significant loss ratio of about a hundred and thirty percent, um, so, and a lot of large, high-cost claimants, so to that end, um, the fifteen percent was not unfair in our estimates, however, um, we did go out to the market, we received quotes from Anthem and Humana, WEA and WPS both declined to quote, so essentially, our choices were to remain with WCA and work out different plan design options, or to move to a different carrier, whether that was Humana or Anthem, Anthem came in at plus nineteen percent for a broad-based network, so when I say broad-based network, that includes all of the major providers, Wheaton, um, Aurora, Freiter, Children's, all of the major hospital systems, um, and they also offered a narrow network option, and their narrow network option is only Aurora and Pro Health, so every other health system would be cut out and would be out of network unless you received a referral to go to those hospital systems, so, a lot of disruption for your staff who may have a doctor down the road at Wheaton, or if they want to go to Freiter or Children's, well, Children's is a network.
And this was particularly true of the staff members or their family members that had had several large claims, we took a look at where those people were seeking care, and many, as you might guess, were seeking care at Freiter.
Secondly, Anthem did not propose a second-year rate guarantee, so in our space, um, we often see, uh, a new carrier come in, and I don't want to say buy the business, but provide a quote that is much less than what your renewal came in at, and our biggest fear when we switch carriers is what's going to happen the following year, are they going to come in and, you know, buy your business, and then we're going to be in the same spot, if not worse, for next year, so we always wanted to ask for a second year not to exceed, so we at least know what the worst-case scenario is for the second year, Anthem was, was not willing to give us that, um, Humana came in with a broad-based network, so again, a very close network match, if not exactly, that we had today through WCA, at eight point zero three percent above current costs, so about seven percent below where the WCA renewal came in, um, Humana will also offer an additional one percent in savings if we move the dental to them, so just to give you some numbers, that is about seventy-two thousand dollars off the renewal, just by switching the dental to them, their dental policy is also five point nine percent below current dental costs, which is an additional savings of about twenty-seven thousand dollars, so they offered to come down in total cost, total package of about a hundred thousand dollars if we switched our dental policy to, to Humana.
And the dental is a two-year rate guarantee, so we're moving everything along the same timeline.
Yep, um, Humana is offering a second year not to exceed of thirteen percent, so to put this in a little bit of context, if claims continue to go at their current rate and we don't get healthier or, or, or make some, some better consumer decisions, um, the worst-case scenario for next year would be a thirteen percent increase, um, I know that's still high, and probably not where the district would like to be next year, but it is at least reassuring to know what the worst-case scenario is, um, in order to receive this not to exceed, the district must, must sign what they called her total health RPA agreement, and essentially what this is, is it's a three-year contract, um, however, the district is not committed for those three years, only Humana is committing to the district, so if next year, we receive our thirteen percent and you'd like to go out to market, we can definitely do that, however, there is what I like to call one oh two ninety-five, so, um, if we have another bad year, Humana can call an additional two percent of the premium at the end of the year when they look at the mature claims, so essentially, um, we would like to at least keep that in mind for further years, that if we continue to run at this rate, we can have that extra two percent of liability, now that two percent does not count towards the renewal, so the renewal would still be capped at thirteen percent of what we're paying starting July first, if that makes sense, I know it gets kind of confusing, um, if we have a really great year, claims turn around, um, and employees are getting the right level of care where they need, we can get up to five percent of our premium back through the course of the agreement, so, essentially, it's, it's kind of like level funding, if any of you are familiar with, um, health insurance and self-funding and those types of things, um, Humana has taken, along with the district, a little bit of a gamble that, hey, if things get better at these current rates, we can get some money back, if not, in order to get that second year not to exceed, we would have to pay that two percent buy-up option at the end of the year.
And there's one, um, further thing, and I think Alex is going to talk a little bit more about this, Humana's total health program has with it the Go Through Sixty-Five program, and particip, engagement credits for participation in that program, and we will, we plan to come back and explain that a lot more to you in, at the May meeting, if you go with the recommendation, because there's some thought process that we want to engage the board in with how you would incentivize people to become engaged, but with these engagement credits, you can actually get up to fifteen percent off your renewal, even at the worst-case level, so depending upon how we can get the participants to want to drive things for their own health, and a lot of the points and the bucks that come through that are by doing the right thing, I got my annual physical, the points drive up, having the dental with Humana and the vision with Humana, all of those kinds of things drive up, so if they get engaged at a silver or higher level, we actually get participation credits for that, and that's their total health program, so they are working toward being a health company, they really want to see people get engaged in their own, in their own health promotion while they're actively at work.
Do they quantify or identify what a good year would be for us?
They, they do, um, the medical loss ratios are outlined, so in order to get, to be below that ninety-five percent, so, literally in this contract, it's the risk participation agreement is what RPA stands for, they actually define what is a fixed cost that will come out before they do the calculation, they'll look at the large shock losses, anything that would, the district paid on a particular claim at over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars will also get pooled out, because you're paying those pooling charges, and then they look at what's left in, in terms of claims, if you're under seventy-five percent, there's a likelihood you'll get up to the five percent back, between seventy-five and eighty-five, it gets a little bit squishy depending upon if the large claimants are expected to be ongoing and continuing, but really eighty-five is break-even, so anything below that, and again, remember, they're looking at a mature year, so you wouldn't know about getting money back or the call until three months after the renewal, so at July one, they would actually be coming for this discussion, um, it would be July, August, September, this would be on or about October first, where they would come and talk about additional liability or getting, giving you money back, and when they call the additional liability, they only take fifty percent of that two percent in the first year, so the two percent is spread out over the three-year contract, just for cash flow purposes.
And at the end of the second year, if we choose not to go with the third year, then it would be obviously due.
Right, right.
Yeah, if we, if we left at any reason to go to a different carrier, Humana would retain or call back the full two percent.
For, just for a bit of perspective, the current commitment we have, was it twelve month or was it eighteen month?
So you are, you are fully insured, so really, your commitment is only month-to-month.
Okay.
Uh, we are on a twelve-month.
We are on a twelve-month rate.
Okay.
So it's seven-one through six-thirty every year. In all honesty, if we wanted to go to a January first renewal date, we could do that.
We've been, I think, Mr. Lewis, you referred, in the past, we have had eighteen months to sort of get the, get the alignment for deductible credits and that kind of thing. We no longer have to do that because through the Affordable Care Act, we make a change on July first. The plan participants get all the credit for deductible out-of-pocket they've spent in this calendar year. So they are made whole, so to speak.
All right. And, and just for comparison's sake, we're obviously facing, if, if we were to stick with WCA, a fifteen percent increase year-over-year in potential cost. If we looked at the potential three-year agreement in a lock with Humana, we're looking at a max thirteen percent.
Correct.
So it's, it's better than what we're currently facing. The, the rate would be potentially more advantageous than what we're currently facing if that trend would continue year-over-year.
Yes, I just want to clarify one point. The second, the thirteen percent rate cap is only for next year's renewal.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Year three is, we don't know.
Year three, we go to a standard underwriting agreement and we look at.
But we're still not locked in, per, per insurance guidelines, we can't be locked in, but we're not locked in for the three-year term. It's our choice at the end of next year, for example, we, let's say we are rate locked at the thirteen, but we know we could potentially get another carrier that would present an eight percent increase.
It's really locked in for twelve months.
Correct.
Correct. And the, the, what, that obligate, really, the lock, the reason you want to sign this contract is it locks Humana into guaranteeing you the engagement credits off the renewal, as well as the second year not to exceed. So the only way we could get it would be through a contract like this.
Because we don't really know what's going on with the Affordable Care Act, and we don't know if they're going to get their act together. Are there any cap, are there, yeah, is, is there, is this Cadillac tax triggering? With the bill as it's written now, assuming nothing changes, I hope that's not the case, is that coming into play here at all?
The, the Cadillac tax now has been backed up again until 2025.
No, that was in the new law.
I'm sorry, that was in the new law. So 2020 will be.
That's what I was scheduled to kick in.
Correct.
So, okay, that doesn't affect this discussion then? Okay, thanks.
I have a question on your general changes, but first, I just want to say that Mr. Lewis returned to his seat at seven-twenty-one for the record. The Humana telehealth benefit will have the same copayment as office visits? Is that, that's not usual, is that a new?
It's, it's unfortunately the only way Humana can administer it. Other carriers have greater flexibility to further incentivize telehealth. That is one difference by moving to Humana is they cannot change that copay. It must match what the primary care physician copay is.
I was going to say, thanks for bringing that up, but I was curious. Do we have any usage rate information on telehealth incidences?
We actually do. We had, I think, in, over the last, I want to say, in particular, the last several months that we've been looking, we've been having roughly around seven to eight visits per month. So cumulatively.
That's, that's system-wide?
System-wide for, for the school district. Now, you know, the, the thing is, is that, is that eliminating urgent care or emergency room visits? Probably. And I think once people get used to it, the whole, and one of the things that I would put up as a little bit of a challenge, the whole idea behind telemedicine or virtual medicine is it's supposed to be the convenience of it, not necessarily. Yes, it absolutely controls costs, because the cost of that visit is only forty dollars as opposed to, you know, urgent care and office visit at a hundred and thirty to a hundred and eighty, and then emergency rooms, of course, much larger than that. So a lot of people started out with incentives at a zero-dollar copay or at a, you know, five or ten dollars, just to pay a little something so that you get it. The whole idea behind it is more the convenience. I don't have to leave my house. I don't have to wait in a waiting room of a walk-in clinic or an urgent care facility for a couple of hours. I don't have to take my three kids when only one is seen. So they're kind of seeing it, and with all of the high-deductible health plans that are in vogue now, they have to charge the full forty dollars anyway, so they're, they feel that it's still a, a cost incentive. And it certainly is one for the plan.
So we took our, we took the Humana proposal and showed it, we gave your incumbent carrier, WCA, what we like to call last look, and said, hey, right now, you're about seven percentage points higher. If you don't come down, you're likely to lose the business. They did come down, but only down to twelve percent, which means that they are still roughly two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars above the Humana price. And there are also minor plan tweaks to what your current WCA plan is to get to that twelve percent. So believing that Humana was the best choice for the district, we worked with Mr. Milzer and Dr. Miller to come up with some plan design changes in order to reduce the financial liability of the district to get it to a more manageable number. So what we came up with, we increased deductibles to four hundred for a single, eight hundred family. The maximum out-of-pocket increased to five thousand, ten thousand, so five thousand single, ten thousand family. We increased the office visit, specialist office visit, to thirty-five dollars. That was twenty dollars. And then we changed the copays a little bit. Currently, you have five dollars for tier one, fifteen dollars for tier two, and thirty dollars for tier three. We added a fourth tier. The fourth tier is a free value-tier generic drug, so we want to incentivize people to get those drugs when possible. We then increased the remaining three tiers to ten, twenty, and forty. Also, we'd like to point out some differences by moving to Humana that just happened in the course of switching carriers. For example, there would be no longer a routine vision exam in the medical that would have to be solved through the vision benefit. No extraction of teeth. Again, this would be, this would be covered under the dental plan, subject to those maximums. No three-D mammograms, and then no erectile dysfunction drugs. All of these changes that are outlined above would result in another two-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand dollars in savings from the renewal number. Our total percentage gets to four point zero-eight percent above the current pricing.
So it's an, it's an, ultimately, it's an increase of about three-hundred thousand dollars.
When we started, it was over a million dollars with WCA.
I want, I want to give you kudos for obviously a lot of that work. I think this is still a really advantageous plan for our employees, something that should be statewide, nationwide, something that draws in decent talent to have a, a plan at this level for somewhat modest increase. If we look nationally and what, what plan increases for a level of employer like the district is. And just for the board's reference, with an increase of our current deductibles from two hundred to four hundred to four hundred to eight hundred, that's still well below our national average, which is one thousand to two thousand. So I think that is, is, you know, it's, one, obviously, that increase is a one-hundred percent increase over what we currently are at. But if we look nationally, it's still a ridiculously good plan for our employees and should hopefully, like I said, be a draw. But likewise, I wanted to, to thank you for the work. I think, looking at some of these slight cost increases across the board, have a larger decrease in our, in our overall cost, I guess, of what the plan is.
I agree. I think the benefits provided in this package are incredible. I think they're great. And so, yeah, the costs are going up, all the costs are going up, but to be able to hold it to a four percent and still be able to offer benefits at the level they're at is, is phenomenal. And a lot of times, we'll do comparisons with other school districts for other, other things, either test scores or salaries or this, that, whatever. Was there any of that done in this regard? Just, I'm just curious, is how, because that's one of the things that we've looked at, tweaking this, tweaking that, and you did a little bit of that, but are we still, I would have to believe, still well within or below, better than what they're offering around? Does anybody have any information on that at all? Or not really?
I think especially with the deductibles, other districts have raised their deductibles similar to what you're talking about, or provided some, some form of HR, HSA, but then gone to two thousand, four thousand, or something like that. So I, I believe it's still a good plan competitive with other school districts.
I think another thing, and I don't have any empirical evidence to back up what I'm about to say, but just speaking from what we do on a day-to-day basis with other districts, and you, you mentioned the Affordable Care Act, there is a lot of volatility in the marketplace, and we are seeing more fifteen percent renewals. We are seeing, I, I had to distribute a forty-eight percent renewal increase this year.
To a school district.
To a school district. So it, there is a lot of volatility, and insurance companies don't like uncertainty, and there is just a lot of uncertainty with what's going on in Washington right now. So I, I think it is great that this district can maintain this level of benefit without, you know, we're seeing, we're seeing more plans have to go to the high-deductible health plan options or to go to narrow networks just in order to help meet budgetary needs. So for, for your district to be able to maintain this level of benefits without blowing up costs too much is, is fantastic, in my personal opinion. It's not necessarily a Horton phenomenon, but.
Well, and we've also seen, you know, when we, when we looked at the district's experience, if you, for lack of a better term, over the last couple of years, you've not been in what I would call a great claim cycle. Things have been getting a little bit crazy, especially with large claims. We kind of have the best and the worst of technology right now. Certain things would never have been done to, with, with some of these claimants, you know, even five years ago. Now we have some really great things that can happen. When we looked at this with, with the WCA data, we don't have, which is very nice here at Franklin, we can look at the data that we have, and the, the staff is not inappropriately using the benefits. It's not where this one is way out to, you know, this one is way out of whack and, you know, have we, do we really need to moderate in a certain area? The specialist copay changing that up and leaving primary care at, at the one level. In one, on the one hand, it says to people that have been going to their cardiologist for the flu, that they could find a primary care doctor and it'll cost fifteen dollars less. But for the people who have to go to what I call the ologists, they're going to pay fifteen dollars more every time they have that visit. So we're trying to manage, you know, the large claims with those needs against how the regular user is going to see this plan and, and not to upset those apple carts, because it doesn't really matter what your deductible is. If I have a fifty thousand dollar claim, I'm going to hit it. So some of the challenge here is a, a little bit of a balancing act between the regular user or the moderate user, and then those people that just really need some, that have some significant claim issues.
What, what's the change in number two? Change medical maximum out-of-pocket to five thousand? What was it, or?
So it was three thousand, six thousand. The increase to five thousand, ten thousand, while it looks really dramatic with your current plan design, where once you hit your deductible, everything is covered at a hundred percent minus the office visit copays, prescription drug copays. So this is a change that we're getting a lot of credit for from Humana, but it's not really impacting members that greatly, because you, the only way I'm going to hit it is if I'm a single person, once I hit my four hundred dollar deductible, I have to have forty-six hundred dollars worth of copays, which, that, that is a, a lot of copays. I would say almost impossible number of copays.
Electives hit that number also?
Correct.
Do electives also hit that number?
Anything that has a copay attached to it, so prescription drugs. I, my twenty-dollar office visit copay, my, yeah, the telemedicine, anything that has a copay attached to it.
I'm thinking more of like Lasik surgery, which might not involve.
No.
That's not covered under the health.
It doesn't, okay.
You do make the statement that this is one of the areas that you think will have a significant impact on getting the most cost-effective care.
Well, what we hope to do and we encourage the out-of, when we increase the out-of-pocket maximum is to get that person who may be going all the time, but they don't necessarily need to go. We want to encourage that user to, you know, they're, it's going to go on for a long time, so we want them to seek the appropriate level of care when necessary at the right level. For example, we don't want them going to the emergency room every time they have, they have a cold or a sore throat. We want them to use urgent care, use telemedicine, go to their primary care physician, those types of tweaks. But to my, to my further, my first point is, it is really hard to hit the out-of-pocket maximum.
When I first came on the board, it was right after Act Ten hit. And there was a lot of trepidation, a lot of fear from the employees in the district, as, oh, boy, now, now what are they going to do? And we had meetings where this room was packed, and it wasn't comfortable up here. I think this is a testament as to how this board has acted over the last six years, that we've been responsible in the changes that we've made, and we've tried to maintain the best plans we can, and we, we trying to balance the finances of the district. And to be six years later, and there's nobody in the room that is, I think, really worried about what's going to happen, I, I think, I think that says something. That says a lot to do with your, the homework and the research you've done, and what you've been able to do to bring good plans to the table. Also knowing kind of what we're expecting. You've been through that with us, and the decisions that we've made, so.
What I was going to ask before is, last year and the year prior, we had a lot of discussions on, obviously, the increase in consumerism, increase in pushing high-cost centers, MRI in a hospital setting versus an MRI at smart MRI facilities. Is there any change in how you, how Humana treats those visits or how they would, how they would charge for those visits versus how we've kind of looked at that cost structure under WCA over the past couple of years?
Humana also encourages, strongly encourages the use of the smart, of smart choice, and they will mention that on every prior authorization call. So every prior, every MRI, PET scan, CAT scan has to be prior authorized, and those, those conversations are taking place at that point in time. Can it be done at a smart choice location? It should not be done in a hospital setting because it drives the cost by about ten times. So they do encourage that. Now, they don't provide the gift card.
Okay.
It keeps it at a different, it obviously keeps it at a different level, but they are having that conversation at the point the doctor's contacting them and saying, I want to order it.
Okay, but I'm saying, like, and that's just, the, the consumer, me personally, I'm not going to see an increase in cost for myself, whether or not I go to smart MRI versus I go to Aurora for an MRI, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, so I guess, I'm, I guess I would be concerned whether or not that choice is actually being, being made in practice. Obviously, that increases overall burden for our insurance company and would be evident in increase year-over-year of double digits. And so I guess I was kind of curious whether or not Humana would approach that differently than WCA had.
From what I understand, the Humana philosophy is that they are, when MRI is appropriate, they are, they are allowing them, and they're having an encouraging conversation with the provider that this not be done in a hospital setting. When the, the challenge we've had with your data, even currently with WCA, who was giving the gift card and had a different, had a different copay for high, high-cost imaging, one of the challenges is that we have such a significant number right now of large claimants, well over thirty people that were over a fifty thousand dollar cost. So that's thirty individuals. If they need to go to an MRI, they're probably staying pretty close to their physician. And just because of some of these kinds of claim types, if you, if you can kind of guess where I'm going with this. So we have, we have some issue with extrapolating who had a choice, how much was elective, where I could actually pick up my stuff and go, hey, they're looking for bone cancer, or, I mean, is that really someplace where I want to go to a standalone center? Or do I want my doctor to have immediate access? So we have, we have some trouble with the data in that, in that specific regard right now.
I, I get it. And, you know, I guess care and outcomes drives a lot of the decision to have it in a hospital setting versus in a smart MRI, which might be more extremity-focused. So I, I get that. I guess, looking forward, if we continue to see double-digit increases, it's obviously an area that I think we could focus on, because I, I think, public-wide, you know, there is that push towards a specialty MRI center that has much reduced cost. And now at least might be focused and have the specialty physicians in-house that a hospital may not anymore.
There, you know, we plan to do a lot of education and employee meetings around this switch, because there's always a cost to change. And there's a lot of pain and heartburn around which, which tier is my drug in now, you know, are my doctors in and all of that. And I will say, you know, one of the challenges, one of the great things, so the pro about WCA, Wisconsin County Association Group Health Trust, is they're all municipal governments and school districts. That's the only faction of, of the public that they serve. And being part of that trust has been very good for the school district over the last several years, because it's mitigated our cost increases. Like we said, had you been with a commercial carrier, that fifteen probably would have looked more like twenty-two. And, you know, and you have a pretty significant body count, so you're a desirable client. The other, but one of the cons with being with a public sector group, so to speak, is they're also a lot more willing to say yes to some things. They also have a little bit more flexibility around some of the, some of the drivers. Where Humana and Anthem, they're going to be commercially, they're profit-driven. So some of the things people are used to getting a yes to are going to be different pain points, different prior authorization procedures. So we need to work your population through this change, because we've been through it before. We went from WA to Humana to WCA, now back to Humana. There will be some people that remember what they went through the last time, and it was either a positive or not-so-positive of an experience. But this is going to be much more of a, we don't make the tier change because you were paying five dollars with WCA. They don't do that. And WCA was very flexible about things like that. They had changed their formularies quite so often. And, you know, so now we're, now we're going to be in a little bit more tough-love world, if, for lack of a better term.
Question. You, you mentioned the goal three sixty-five. I know you're not going into the details of that, but that seems to be kind of key in future renewal rates, and based on participation and obviously behavior. So how much do we have to really move the needle there to really? Is this a, like, a huge thing that we're trying to accomplish here, or do we have good participation in these kind of things?
So under the, under the agreement, for the first year, we must get to at least ten percent. I will say that that is a very easy number to get to. We have a district that said. We had Wapon School District who said, here's the. We have a district that said, we had Wopon School District who said, here's the program, you can get some gift cards, go nuts, and then they didn't touch it and they got twenty-two percent participation. People will do it because, one, a portion of your population just enjoys that kind of stuff. They like doing the, the runs, the walks, they get their annual physicals, and there's gift cards tied to it. So they can get Amazon gift cards, they can get Target gift cards, they can get a new Fitbit, they can get bikes. There's a whole mall that they can go out and get. For the other eighty or so percent of your population, they're gonna need to be.
Incentivized.
Incentivized. Whether that is through, whether that is through the mall or if, you know, in the future, next year or whatever, we want to tie premium contributions to that. We're seeing a lot of people do that. Two Rivers got to eighty percent participation.
In their first year.
Which is eight percent off the renewal. So for, for example, next year, we have the worst year ever, at thirteen percent, we're looking at a five percent renewal right off the bat. So Humana is the only insurance company that's putting their mouth, their money where their mouth is when it comes to wellness. And a lot of your employees may remember Vitality and how it was kind of a clunky service. It's rebranded, it's all new, it's very user-friendly. My mother.
Even I can do it now.
She can do it now. So, so I, I think your staff will have a better experience with it. It does take a lot of education. We have a person on staff who, Angela, she's great, and then you also have a Humana person that's just focused on Go Three Sixty-Five to help drum up as much participation as we can get. I would say sixty percent hopefully is a, is a goal that we can achieve, forty percent for sure, because that's, that's four percentage points next year that, that we can take off the renewal right off the bat. So worst-case scenario, that would be nine percent, if we can just get to that forty percent threshold, so.
So where, where are we coming from? Zero to?
Right now, you have a wellness program, but there's, that's voluntary engagement and they're getting, they're winning some gift cards and people seem to really, really like that. And our person, Angela, has come and facilitated some of the meetings and some of the ideas for competitions, et cetera. This one is, this is literally driven by things that you can personally do, your family can personally do. So if your kids are in a soccer league, if, or they play soccer or basketball, there's points for that in the family. Like we said, all the wellness visits that you automatically do, points are uploaded if you're within the healthy range. So for example, I had, I had my annual physical and they do all your numbers, you fill that in, if your blood pressure's in range, you get four hundred points. If your sugar, your glucose is in range, you get another four hundred. So you get up to four thousand points just for having your annual physical. It's, it's fairly easy to get points and bucks and as people start to get competitive around it, the walks are two hundred and fifty dollars, or two hundred and fifty points. So there's, it's not, and you don't have to be a gym rat, you can take health quizzes online. The whole thing is, that starts with the health assessment and the biometric screen because we hope what people are getting is those aha moments that say, this really is at a level that's dangerous to me or could become dangerous, here's some suggestions for some easy fixes. So it's, I think you'll find that most of, I think most of the planned participants here are very coachable.
Do we have biometrics requirements now?
No, we do not.
This is really, that is gonna be new for.
And it's free.
And it's paid for by Humana. So they'll bring people onsite to do the finger sticks, fill out the health risk assessments and give them the reports right away.
That's a great option.
Didn't it say in here that, you were talking about wellness program, that they're no longer gonna pay for gym membership still?
WCA.
Oh, WCA, okay.
Yeah. That was something that they were given, they were given some credits if people belonged to certain gyms. That's not included with Humana. You, I mean, the Go Three Sixty-Five is their program, but WCA is no longer gonna pay for them either if you wanted the twelve percent, seeing that that's still three hundred thousand dollars over where we're looking to be. Doesn't make sense.
So the only other point I wanted to bring up was a question I posed to Dr. Miller and Mr. Millsr was related to the waiver of premium and the previous plan and how, how we're proposing moving towards more of a Cobra manager or option plan. And I don't know how many individuals are familiar with Cobra or qualifying events which would fall under Cobra, but I don't know if you wanted to explain it?
Sure. When, back when we were, way back before probably Mr. Nielsen, you were even on the board, we had a waiver of premium policy with WEA. This was part of the longstanding Wisconsin Education Association Trust plan. What this, what this meant was, if I became, if I as the employee here at the district became totally disabled and I was eligible for long-term disability benefits, the district would pay for twenty-nine months of my premium, single or family, which would get me to Medicare. So the assumption always was for the waiver of premium that you weren't gonna be able to return to work. You were needing to get to Medicare eligibility, which is twenty-nine months. That perfectly aligns with Cobra.
Is that the only qualifying event too that was managed under the previous plan? There weren't other qualifying events?
There was, other than you had to be on LTD.
Okay.
Okay? So that was how you got district-paid benefits. When we left WEA, Humana didn't do that. And they customized for us the first year. The second year, they said, we'll give you a percent, I think it was, off the premium if you take this away or if you choose to still do it. Cobra doesn't care who pays for it. We don't care who pays for Cobra, but we're not going to pay for it any longer. So the district elected to continue this as they would pay for the premium instead of the insurance company paying for the premium. So now what we're saying is, this is no longer, ninety-nine percent of the school districts no longer have this option. So Cobra is still available, all the federal Cobra rights still align with a total disability. So if I leave, I just terminate or my hours are reduced or I leave because you firmly suggested to me, I get eighteen months. If my family members get up to another eighteen months after the initial eighteen for certain qualifying events, after eighteen, eleven is for total disability and that gets you to Medicare. So twenty-nine months of, of Cobra gets you to Medicare and then that's your primary payer. So we're just recommending that anybody who's currently in the program that's paid, being paid for by the district, we would grandfather them and, and let them finish. Obviously, anybody who gets in before July one, we would consider them part of the grandfather class. But as we move forward after July one, if anyone comes into this class, they would be required to pay their own Cobra premium.
Thanks for asking that question. Thanks for asking that question.
Yeah.
One, one last thing. I did wanna touch on Vision, because that is in the, at the very end of the packet. Humana is changing Vision platforms. We're currently in a rate guarantee with Vision, so we don't need to change. However, if we change to their new Vision one thirty plan, they will offer a four-year rate guarantee at your current rates. So there are some differences in providers that are available, but it's, a small percentage of your population would be impacted by switching. We think for the four-year rate guarantee, it's, it's worth the switch, but I did wanna bring that up just so you know what it is at the end of your packet.
And again, since we're doing pretty extensive employee meetings for the medical and the dental switch, assuming that the board approves this recommendation, we might as well hit on the new, on the new Vision plan at the same time, just to line everything up.
Just a reminder, the district does not pay for the Vision plan, that the employee pays for that if they choose to have it.
So you approached Humana and, and they said, okay, we'll be at eight, eight-point-three percent? And then they said, well, but if you package the dental and you package the Vision and you make a couple of the tweaks, that's how you got it down to the four.
Correct.
Okay.
And what's the second year then?
Thirteen.
Max of thirteen.
Oh, you didn't impact the second year by making these changes?
Well, it did.
Well, we're gonna be starting off a four percent instead of an eight percent.
Okay, I know.
And it could go down even more if we get the Go Three Sixty.
Go Three Sixty.
Participation. And even that doesn't lock us in. We still would have the option if we wanted to.
I would say it would probably be very rare. If you got the maximum that you're gonna be looking to move, but, because I doubt the market's gonna be.
There is that.
Get back here faster than you think.
So I guess you're, I would make a motion to approve the move to Humana as proposed with the dental and Vision obviously included in the proposal.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Lewis and a second by Mrs. Larson. And did that cover everything we needed then?
Yes.
The only thing I was gonna add to that is, can we, can we ensure that this comes back after a year or is it just has to come back after a year?
Always comes back.
Always comes back. Even though we have the guarantee, we'll still have an opportunity for this discussion. We'll know where we are.
Do you want to have a separate motion on the waiver of premium or did you wanna include that?
That's part of the original proposal, is it not?
It's part of the recommendation, but it doesn't really have much to do with the Humana move. It's a, that's a separate district.
Maybe we, if we accept the recommendations, then it includes everything on these two pages?
They say as proposed.
It's in the recommendation document.
You did say as proposed.
I did say as proposed, so I think you.
Or you wanted to make sure. Is that okay with?
That's fine.
That's fine?
And when are you coming back on the?
We were, we were looking to get on the agenda for May. Right before we would do the employee meetings, we would want to have a conversation about the Go Three Sixty-Five program and some potential thoughts around incentives because we'd like to introduce that obviously this year for next year's discussion.
And that information we learned at that time has nothing to do with any decision we're making now?
Correct.
Well, I guess, the only thing that ties them together would be the move to Humana.
I'm sorry, what?
The, the decision between what we talked about tonight and what we'll talk about in May would be the move to Humana.
How that would look.
Yes.
Is that essentially, okay.
Any other discussion? Do you, can you give me the roll call on this?
Yes.
Okay, roll call please.
Mrs. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Gamble.
Aye.
Mrs. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen.
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski.
Aye.
Can I say yes?
Motion carries seven, zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. Thank you. Okay. Next is item nine C, the twenty-seven eighteen budget assumptions. Mr. Millsr.
We're starting to put together our budget information that will come to the board at the end of June. As a budget, a couple of things I just wanted to make the board aware of, what we're looking at, of course, this time of year, we're, we're estimating everything. One was enrollment. We're just looking at ten additional resident students and we had approved fifty-six open enrollment students. The CPI for July one seventeen is one-point-two-six percent, as determined by the state, so that would be the number that equates to bargaining with represented groups. State aid and revenue, we had a two-point-four-six percent increase in our equalized value. Looking at the whole state, it was two-point-nine. We're just slightly below that, so we would, we would think that we would look at least a little bit poorer than other districts and that we would get additional aid or at least not lose aid in the equalization aid formula. The, the big talk really, though, is around the governor's budget and how much money will go to education, K-12 public schools. And he has suggested that he would like to see two hundred dollars per student in the first year, two hundred and four in the second year. And you're probably seeing that play out in the newspapers of different legislators wanting to put some of that money into transportation or arguing whether that money really exists or not. So politics is in full swing, but it's good that the, the governor has said public schools should get some extra money because we really need it. Even the amounts that they're projecting is only a one-point-six percent increase in our revenue. And that would be, this would be one of the areas, one of the only areas that would go up in that scenario because the revenue limit wouldn't increase at all. But they're putting it into their new per pupil categorical aid, which distributes it to all school districts. It doesn't go through the formula and get spread out really unevenly across the state. A couple of the catches, if you will, in this are that the, the governor asked that all districts be able to certify that they charge employees at least twelve percent for their health insurance.
And we do, correct?
And we do. So we could do that, but some districts can't because they've made changes in their plan instead of doing that, so, you know, we'll see how that plays out. And the other one was that once you received the aid, you had to distribute it directly to the schools in direct proportion to each school's enrollment in the current and two preceding years, which, it, it just makes no sense at all. That isn't, that isn't what drives your cost there or whether those teachers have been here a long time or not. So like to have the money, like to have some of those things removed so that we can use the money appropriately, but if those are the caveats that come with it, then that's how we'll budget the money. So we're definitely keeping an eye on that and how it plays out.
What would be the detriment for us under that model?
Really, all it says is you have to budget the money that way.
Okay.
So I'd be happy to do that. I might be off on the budget a little bit that year.
So are they, are they saying drill down to the, to the building level and say you have X number of students here and here and here and so you need to proportionally put your money in?
Wow.
Right. And we just talked about health insurance, there could be fewer people that take health insurance in a building and more in another, that you would need more money in a different building.
It's interesting. I, I guess it would come into play a lot with a larger district that might have disproportionately funded buildings.
Right.
But interesting.
Be tight on your budget to make sure.
The only question I was gonna ask you is, you said fifty-six open enroll? Fifty-six open enrollment seats?
Right.
And that was against how many spots that were available?
Fifty-six spots.
We had fifty-six total spots and fifty-six were filled?
Yeah. But they aren't filled yet.
Okay.
But we're, we're looking at.
I got you, I got you.
I'm projecting that those would be filled. It wouldn't increase our total number of students by fifty-six because we need to replace the ones that are leaving. And we've been pretty stable over the last couple of years.
Okay. And, and if we looked at overall applications for open enrollment, what, what do those numbers look like?
There was a report that I provided in January. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, but it's, it's in January. It's.
The hundreds, like two hundreds, three hundreds?
Yeah, it's a lot.
Okay, sorry.
We get a lot of open enrollment applicants.
Have you looked at any other parts of the budget that Walker put together? Is, is, he's still looking at expanding vouchers too, right?
Right.
So he's putting money into that, but then also putting money into proposing in the public education.
Right.
I get it, okay.
His approval rating was very low.
Very low.
His approval rating was very low in the last couple of years and there is an election coming up, so.
Right, right.
How does the, the formula assumptions that you have in here compare to last year? You know, it's driven because there's no change in the.
Uh.
It's only relative to each other that we're changing, is that correct?
Right, right.
And where were we last year?
Um, I don't think we were too far different than this. I could look it up and let you know, but it wasn't a big swing last year either.
Are we covering the back of the page or?
Yes.
Oh.
So on transportation, we have a consortium of school districts in the area. In the last go-round, we got four years of a zero percent increase. Unfortunately, we couldn't get another five years of zero percent. So we have three percent in the first year and two and a half percent each of the four years on our agreement. So we have three percent in the first year and two and a half percent each of the four years on our agreement.
Question. So, you know, fuel is very favorable. Does that impact, impact that? I mean.
Fuel is separate.
Oh, you just pay what the fuel is?
Yes. We make a guess at what the fuel is, but I think we're.
If prices go up, we'll pay more. If prices go down, we get some credits?
Yes. Right now, we're getting credits.
Do we know what bus drivers are being paid?
Uh, low fourteen's, I think fourteen thirty something. Bus companies very nervous about that in a five-year agreement that. And, and with four percent unemployment that they might be paying twenty dollars for a bus driver in five years. It's very hard, very hard to come by. I mean, we have bus drivers here for our small buses and we've had to do and put out incentives that we pay to get people to even apply. It's, it's tough. On the retiree front, we have so far nine teachers retiring, about the same as last year. Salaries, we'll, we'll talk about that at an upcoming meeting about represented groups and non-represented groups. And then the benefits, of course, we just covered most of that. And we'll continue to maintain our fund balance as we move forward. So those are the, the assumptions and the approach we're taking as we start to put the budget together.
Did we get one hundred new students last year or was that one hundred counting open enrollment?
No, we did get one hundred new students.
We did get a hundred, okay.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Item ninety, it's on this part of the agenda, District Administrator Characteristic Survey Results. So that the public could see that. I don't know if you want to discuss that now or when we get into closed session. Are there any comments right now?
I just wanted to indicate that overall, we received five hundred and nine surveys back, which was much greater than in two thousand and seven when we had actual meetings and people had to show up. I don't have the numbers, but I would think we'd be hard pressed to have had fifty people come to those meetings. So it was much better from that perspective. We had three hundred and seventy-four parents, a hundred and fifty-three employees and twenty-eight community members take the survey. And, and like you said, there's no action required.
Thank you. Oh, I do want to mention on that though, regarding that survey, Survey Monkey and what we're gonna talk about next are board self-evaluation that maybe we want to consider on surveys. Looking into a software program for our own district to use instead of Survey Monkey. And you'll see when we get in our next one, how poor it tabulates that maybe, and Mr. Millsor can speak to that too and maybe Megan too, that it's not the best survey to use. But so maybe even if the board wants to talk about that, might be a good idea, but maybe at another time. Item nine E, the board's self-evaluation. Okay. Megan printed a hard copy of just the standards because it didn't show up on the Survey Monkey. These actual standards so that it'd be easier to refer to them when we're looking at this. So.
So I guess first of all, did everyone feel like this was a bit easier and more straightforward to use versus the previous year's format? I guess people that weren't involved in the.
Well, yeah, Larry didn't get to, Larry didn't participate, so, but he can participate in talking about this. But I liked it myself, except for I, I have an issue with the responsiveness one, that it didn't really correlate with what it was asking. But otherwise, I personally liked it. I don't know about everybody else, but.
I'll state that I thought it was much more straightforward. It was much quicker in terms of sit-down time to complete it. But I thought it, after looking at the results and we can discuss about the feedback, I thought it was actually a bit easier to correlate based off of something that we truly want to measure off of and receive a response.
I think it'll lead to, we go to a board retreat, that now we can set some goals on these. And I think that was the purpose, but. And the administrators pointed out to me that they took it as one.
Okay.
This time, I don't know if that's what we want in the future or, but they did take it as, in a meeting as, maybe you want to speak on that. You took it as one group.
Right. So the directors sat together and we felt that collectively, we wanted to communicate as a team what we felt the performance of the board was and what our expectations were collectively, feeling that would be of greater value to the board.
So, yeah, this, it just kind of printed out funky if you ask me, but so here we are. Standard one. So, I want to join in here. I mean, if you, yeah, here we go. I mean, what we're leading up to now is what, just obviously to point out what we want to talk about at, I mean, well, when we have a board retreat and then perhaps we can have the direct, maybe Judy and Jim send out an email to us so that we could set up some dates for a retreat. So then obviously, we want to try to figure out what here we want to talk about at a retreat to set our goals. So.
Just a quick question. So the survey results that we have there in the board docs, there are only seven people answered, right?
The adminis, the directors are one and then six of us and Larry, this is based on the past year. So Larry couldn't do it because he wasn't here. So that's why, it would have been eight otherwise, or it could have been more if we had the directors each do it separately, but.
Okay.
So, I mean, standard one was governance and some we thought we did very well all along and most of us that we.
And I still think it's hard to parse those two answers.
It is, yeah, it is. But I, I mean, I, I, obviously, we do pretty well at this, but there were some that stood out that we need to improve on. So.
I think it's, I think it's pretty clear with regards to goals. We haven't set annual goals. You know, that's, we've kind of had the three-year goal discussion with Dr. Pats and we really haven't touched upon those. You know, I think the, the bottom bullet point, the board leads the district with clear goals, policies and expectations and does not expect others to interpret the board's intent. I think out absent the statement on goals, I think that's really accurate. I think our expectations are fairly well-known. We've communicated those. I think each administrator is fairly aware with what we expect with not only data presentations, management of the district. So I think that's fairly clear. But I think, you know, one of the reasons I didn't say that we met every single one is we obviously haven't met, we haven't met the duty of setting annual goals and discussing those. And I think that's something we should focus on. They don't have to be overarching ten thousand foot goals. You know, they can do something fairly specific that we discuss such as including everyone in a discussion on board participation or board self-evaluation things. Something that I probably would have identified last year as something, a goal of ours to redo this so we increase participation, so. That's just my two cents here.
And there were a couple about board pop, the administration's recommendation on board policies. I'm not sure exactly where, where everybody's coming from on that, but actually. But obviously, the goal one is the major one.
You're talking about the feedback actually on the.
Yeah, mhm.
What page is that? The fourth page of the feed, the results?
Yeah, and then, and a couple on the, the board members do not interfere in district operations. And I, obviously, everybody wants clarification on that, so, because that was mentioned a few times. So it looks like the goals, we can work on those, a couple of things like that at a retreat, getting an explanation on that.
Review of policies, you know, I make a point to this because we've discussed this a lot over the past year. And I think it's, it's still a daunting task to look at the amount of policies we have and to figure out an, a review cycle that's adequate for us to actually allocate a decent amount of time, but not hijack a meeting with, with all policy issues. So, you know, I, I set out, I don't know if you remember, last year, set out a commitment to review WASB's list of policies versus our list of policies. And to say that that's complete would be a gross understatement. But to say that I have not started it would also be miscategorization. So I think we're, one thing that I'm struggling with is we have policies that cover two to three what WASB would require and vice versa. So it's kind of turned into a web of, you know, I don't know if you remember those old miss and match, what word corresponds with what, what other word? But that's basically what it's turning into in terms of a mapping process. But I think this is something that, at, at least Dr. Miller, obviously being a champion of the policies of the district, I think we just have to continually figure out what's the right fit. Not having five hundred policies is probably a goal of ours, but at the same time, having our, above what the minimum requirement is, I think.
Good topic for the board retreat.
Hundred percent.
I think it's a great thing to tackle there.
I mean, when I see what, you know, sometimes I look at what other districts have for policies and it's just amazing to me that it, it looks like they've got five hundred policies and I, I don't understand why.
And they're probably not reviewing them on a regular basis.
No, how could they have a policy for every little thing? I don't understand why they do that.
You know, I'll point out one of my comments, which was receive more feedback from directors on necessary, unnecessary policies because I think some of them related to pupil services, some of them related to instruction. And I think receiving your input on some of these policies would be valuable. You know, are there areas that we just ask the question, why do we even have this policy? Or does it need to be more robust? So I think that's an area that we probably could lean on you guys a bit more.
But I think you do that anyway, don't you, when you have a policy, don't you?
Right. When there's a draft, it always goes through the appropriate individual to, you know, the nurses do it or Nick or Chris will look at something in the instruction area before it's brought forward. But I think it's a great topic for the retreat to really just kind of sit down and say, what do we want to do? Here they are, you know, how do we want to work through them and what's important to us about this? So I, I think we should talk about that.
Well, especially since it's one of our main duties, so bless my, that was a sneeze bliss.
Well, I think it's also important that we keep it relevant to us. Doesn't mean that what the WASB has is right or appropriate for what we're doing here. So, yeah, I think we just keep reviewing them and.
It's, it's the legal baseline, basically.
Right.
Whether or not we've met that baseline, I think is a question which I'm pretty confident that we have. But it's whether or not we have two or three policies that really relate to one of theirs and can we consolidate like we did into the board policies?
Or even the categories.
Absolutely.
You know, you look for weapons and it's in the community section versus the student section. And so I think there's a lot of discussion we can have around that. I think we have to structure it though to be productive.
So do we want to move on to standard two? Establishing the expectations. One of the comments that, that I noticed that someone wrote about our mission and vision statements, that we don't really refer to them. And when we're making our decision-making, and I said, yeah, that's true, we don't often refer to them. And, and I've noticed other districts, they've got them written on their, you know, like in our high school, theirs are written on the walls so people see them every day and, you know, there's no reason we can't have ours.
Right here.
Well, that's not ours.
Whoa, whoa, okay.
Now we want a big bear right there.
But we could have it.
Maybe if we had it in two inch type instead of one.
Is that the updated one?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, but, you know, we could, but we should really, should think about it when we're making our decisions more. So I thought that was a good comment by someone, but.
He has to put on every agenda. Print it on every agenda. You could point for that one.
We used to, what did you say? We used to.
Print it on every agenda with the mission and vision is right there.
That's an idea.
You could probably tell which statement was mine based on what I said at the beginning of the meeting. But since, since this is obviously focused on student achievement, it's the last one, which I think, you know, whether or not each one of us has visited our liaison school or taken the opportunities that both Nick and Chris have offered to see teaching in action, I think is, but my takeaway for this whole year had been that, would have been that exercise to visit an elementary school, the middle school and the high school, to see the change in learning instruction and the way that the classrooms are structured, involvement, interaction and assessment practice of an actual test being taken. It was ridiculously valuable.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea, but I do want to point out that in the past, we were cautioned to stay away from the schools and make an appoint, you know, make an appointment to just see the principal and this function, which someone else pointed out also, the function of a liaison was not what you were talking about. So to be encouraged now to do these things is good because we were not encouraged to do that.
And frankly, the feedback that I got, like I said, some individual teacher said, I wish more people did this. But from the building administration at the middle school and Susie Rock at the high school was, I wish more board members did this to see the school in action during a, during a normal day. So if you, really, take them up on the offer because I think your, your eyes will be opened much like my. You know, I thought I expected what I was gonna see, and it wasn't, it wasn't the case. There were some of the courses and topics and level of detail, the workshop model, things that we talk about here, but you actually see it in action.
So you stay away from a math class though, didn't you?
I went to a math class.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. Mr. Clump's math class was the class that held an assessment.
Oh, okay. Was a math instruction.
Correct.
So what does, I hope it, no, what does no mean? No?
This is supposed to be anonymous, but.
I didn't quite understand.
We won't go there.
All right.
We may have said you had an answer and obviously somebody didn't have an answer.
Much like the next one.
I don't think it would let you go on unless you answer. I, I don't mean to be looking at anyone, but I think that's how it was. I wish I would have thought of that.
That was the rule, we had to have an answer.
Believe me, I tried to click past one.
We wanted to have a stockage.
Okay, accountability, um, three. Where are we here? Expect, oh, accountability.
So this is one actually that I thought the feedback was pretty interesting to say that four of us thought we consistently met all of the indicators. And three of us thought, including the administration, that we've consistently met most of the indicators. And based at, based on the seven indicators listed, I found it hard to do anything other than consistently met all of the indicators. So if anyone is willing to discuss what indicators were, were perceived that we're struggling on or haven't met.
For kids, for kids.
Well, I, I don't know, Jeff. I mean, I could change my answer if the, you know, then we have that many more on the means. I, I don't know. I'm sure I put needs most.
I think I probably do. I don't know, we prioritize needs based on data, data analysis. I think we're kind of. We get a budget that's pretty much the big budget, doesn't target different particular areas based on priorities. So if we had an area that we can improve on, that's probably why I didn't go all the time.
But I would agree. I believe, I believe we meet all the standards.
I mean, the only one that I had a comment on was the supports recognition systems to encourage high level of staff and student achievement. And so I think we do that. I think we do recognize teachers and have teachers recognize other teachers that they view as high performing teachers. But do, do we do that enough as a board? I think is an interesting question. I mean.
Well, the middle school recognition breakfast.
Right. And we have staff recognition, but I mean, do, do we, is there, do we, have we provided in the past like a five dollar Starbucks discard, a gift card to staff members during the holiday season? Do we do, do we do free coffees during staff meetings at the high school or middle school or individual buildings? Do we do something where the board would sponsor a coffee and donuts, all staff meeting at one of the buildings? And I think when we went to the National Association meeting, that was one of the sessions that I went to was actually district involvement. And they talked about staff appreciation, student appreciation. And I was gonna pitch this idea to everybody, but it was a holiday card competition for our kindergarten, for second, third, K-six, whatever, whatever we wanted to do and have each, each student in a, in an art class have to create a, basically a gift card and had a building voting, you know, so there was a, a card per building and that card was distributed randomly on behalf of the board to each staff member to show appreciation during, during the holiday season. Something to not only embrace student artistic design and say, this is what our students created, but it's something on behalf of the board to the staff. And this was one thing that a, a district in New Jersey came up with where they would have six, ten different versions of the card with the same statement from the school board to the, to the district staff. One year, they pitched in for five dollar Starbucks gift cards for every staff member within the district. They did the coffee and donuts for all, all building meetings and random months. But they did numerous different outings for, for building, had opportunities for them to go bowling on a certain night. But had random, you know, just thank you for being a teacher. Because one of the individuals up there was superintendent who was a teacher and they said very rarely did they actually just get a thank you from building administration or district staff, which I thought, you know, I know that we do it. I know we have staff appreciation. But we, do we do it at a district-wide level? And I think there's instances that we do.
Teacher Appreciation Week is coming up. It's, I think, the first week of May. So we, we do apples and cookies in all of the buildings and it's kind of a generic sign that says thank you. They may think it's from the board or from the administration, but that's one gesture. One year, our custodians worked particularly hard shoveling snow and they all got like mini coolers. So we do, do some things, but it's not just specifically from the board.
I know there's a lot of that that takes place at the, like the PTO level, middle school, you remember, with the PAWS group and, and at the high school with Saber Spirit Club. So they.
is the board to staff members in terms of being the, the board of a district, of the CEOs of the district, which was just an interesting thought, you know, I'd never really thought about the art competition and using that as a holiday card, I thought that was a great idea. Coffee at staff meetings, I thought that was an easy, hey, this is provided by the board, yes, the district says thank you, but have we as a board said thank you?
Well, we used to have staff members and students come before the board and present to us, and we just, that fell by the wayside, so we did celebrate them, I don't think we do it enough. We have sports teams, academic teams come before us, and we would give them certificates, but kids are busy, families are busy, you know, I mean, teachers want to go home, too, at the end of the day, so that might be a nice idea. I don't think we do it enough, though.
I mean, when there's free coffee at work for me, I beeline it right to the free coffee, so I'm assuming other folks are the same as me. I would hope they are.
Government's, uh, free. Like, then we go to work and expect free coffee.
Not from the county executive to say, hey, thank you for all county employees.
What taxpayers say?
We're spending a hundred dollars on coffee for a staff meeting? I think it's a worthwhile investment to show a piece of appreciation.
There's other ways to, to show appreciation. I like the idea, yes, we should.
I, I agree, I think that there are other ways, but I think there's, there's simple, cost-effective, potentially cheap ways of saying, hey, thank you.
This might be something we can talk about at a retreat.
Yeah, definitely.
Responseiveness, this was the one that I think we need to work on, this question, because the indicators are good indicators, but then we ended up listing all these words.
Multiple choice?
What did you say about? No, not multiple choice, but we listed the words, and then what's the point of, because if, if we look at the indicators, they're, they're good indicators, but then listing all these words, what do we do with them? And the, and, and the words we listed, list three words that describe the board's responsiveness, okay, look at what we have there, they're quite interesting.
I think if you look at the frequency of some of the, the types of words, demanded, disconnected, versus reactive, inquisitive, I think it, and the frequency of those types of words.
Well, and if you put it from the last year, if he felt, if the board felt this way the past, the past year, why, why did some of us feel this way the past year? I think we need to fix that, but then if you look back at the indicators, what does this have to do with that? I mean, board members fully inform the superintendent of situations arising in the district that impact the district. I, I feel we all do that.
I do too, I would agree with that.
We meet for a retreat, do we avoid difficult decisions when we're required to take a position? I think we all face the decisions, then go back up towards the top. I don't know.
Well, I think the one about the, the board members fully inform the superintendent, I think the other way around, too.
Well, yes, it should be the other way around.
When I was looking at this answer, I'm thinking, I'm the one that wrote reciprocal in there, because that's, it works both ways.
Okay, okay.
But that's their, that's their evaluation, not necessarily ours.
Right, this is for us, this is how we're doing as a board.
So, as a superintendent, I would expect that their responsiveness includes informing the board of, what is it?
Because look at the beginning of each indicator, it's the board works, the board members, you know, so this is how we're, we're doing. Are we working with the superintendent to provide a process? Are we treating the staff members in a respectful way?
But as far as the first one, the board works with the superintendent to provide a process, I don't think in the past year that worked, that worked, or the past years, so I, I think we need to work on that.
That's why growing is a good word.
Mhm.
It's a star.
I put appropriate, just, because I think currently, over the past year, I thought our responsiveness was appropriate, not necessarily great, it's not poor, but it's... Actually, I think I put appropriate.
District team put appropriate.
Did district team put appropriate? Then what did I put?
I'm like, you stole our word!
What did I put?
Colors on that!
Maybe put supportive.
I couldn't do one word.
No, we would all be one. You're all one?
I'm not surprised.
Look at the timestamp.
I don't know which one, I don't know which is... Good, it's done.
What were we supposed to do with the words? You guys put, what was the intent of putting the words here?
Yeah, so I think, when we, when we designed this, I, we tried to use, personally, when I tried to come up with options, and I think we chose this as one of them, was, have you guys seen the word plots, where if you use this one word more similarly than another, it gets bigger? What I wanted to do without having the capability was if we saw a lot of the same categories of words, for example, supportive, growing, appropriate, supportive, timely, consensuous, I think we could all lump those together to being the same category of word, of being adequate, supportive, whatever you wanted to use. So, you could see the frequency that those types of words were used was higher than disconnected, um, demanded, stifled, you know, I think those words were less frequent, so you could obviously gather from that that we're, we're in agreement that our work has been adequate with response to standard four versus if it was a lot of demanded, below average type words, we could say, okay.
What if you, I mean, there's frequency, but there is, I mean, concern that someone put demanded, right? Stifled, even though it's sort of once, but stifled, I, what was that about? I don't know.
Right, I guess that's also the purpose of having the free text fields is to say...
So, you would have liked maybe more of an explanation?
Yeah, because I don't really...
Next to these words?
I just don't like...
But that was also part of, we wanted to spur a conversation, to say, okay, if someone wants to volunteer, that they wrote stifled, what does that mean? So, I think that was also one of the purposes of using open text fields, is to spur conversation.
Explain your word.
Yeah, versus the old one where it was just literally dead air for forty-five minutes of us reading.
Well, I think having to synthesize your thought into one word is, I don't know, is an okay exercise. And then, you know, we have the platform of the retreat and even this discussion, but more so with the retreat to expound on it.
So, obviously, I think this one and the next, standard four and standard five are two standards that obviously rated the lowest, I think, out of all of them, so they obviously would provide, hopefully, an opportunity to discuss these.
Mhm.
Could we write this question with three words?
That was one of the ones that I suggested, yeah.
Really? I don't remember that.
So, you can blame me if you didn't like it.
Oh, and done.
And stealing other people's words.
And then the last one, engagement.
Wow, we're all lower the place on that.
I just think that there's a lot of frequency of it being more visible at community events or school events. There's three, number one, number two, and number six.
Yep.
Which I think is apparent.
I think this would be interesting discussion as to how there wasn't one situation where the board considered input from multiple perspectives. Someone put can't.
Oh, the next?
Not one, can't, never could, so that would be interesting.
Wait, which one?
It's the next page.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, did I skip ahead?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, did I skip that?
Did you put can't?
I was on page...
I didn't.
On page fourteen.
I wonder who did it.
Thirteen, I was on page thirteen.
Well, so, should we have...
Put a name, so let's put a word in, sorry.
Should we have, um, Dr. Miller, do you want to send an email, or either one of you out to the board, like we've done in the past, to gather dates for a retreat? I don't know, because the directors usually go to retreat, too, so we have to, I, I guess here we could decide, do we want to keep it on a weeknight like we have in the past? We, we've always done, you know what a retreat is?
No, when you...
Might be helpful.
When you say keep it on a weeknight, that works for me, because weekends are...
Yeah, so...
... looked with my job.
Yeah, so what we usually do is meet, maybe until nine o'clock or so, and we try to formulate goals, or we discuss a top, you know, a few topics, we might have to have more than one retreat if we're going to do goals, and it's like development for the board, and we work with the directors also.
Was the last retreat the food? Was that, was that considered a retreat last year?
Yeah, yeah, that was a field trip retreat.
Oh, yeah.
We made food, they did that.
That's right.
We did that, like, we went to the quarry for a visit, and we went to the high school and did cooking with the students there.
This is a working retreat.
This is a working retreat, yeah.
And I think we discussed previously about pushing these to different buildings potentially. Didn't we discuss that last time also?
Meetings?
No, the retreats.
The retreats?
That we wouldn't have them at this building. I thought that was something that we discussed with Steve. No?
Well...
They tried something different, getting out of, out of this setting for when we did the quarry tour, and we did the high school thing, but...
Right, no, I thought, I thought we discussed this last year, as like part of the retreat was to potentially focus on just having a retreat at the middle school, or the high school, or an elementary school, just to have a different scenery, whatever, I thought that was what we discussed last year. Does anyone else remember that?
Well, we used to have board meetings at, in different buildings, maybe you might be remembering that, but we do now because we're videotaped, we have them here, but...
All right, never mind.
I mean, it, it works well here to reserve a room, so, but, okay, so we'll, we'll work on that, so.
Probably use this tool called Doodle, if you've ever used Doodle before, you'll get an email and you go to a link, and then you get to check the boxes of when you're available, it's the easiest way to get everybody's schedules. So, watch for an email with a link to Doodle.
Do you say doodle or moodle?
I think it's doodle.
It's D, yeah, it's doodle.
As long as we have...
It's a really cool service.
Okay, as long as we have access.
It's free and...
You don't have to log in or anything.
Okay. All right, well, then, I'm looking for a motion to enter into closed session for the purposes stated below. Consideration of proposed contract with WASB for the conduct of an administrator's search, the negotiation strategy for such contract, and whether the negotiation strategy should include seeking other bids for such search pursuant to Wisconsin statutes, nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub E and B, discussion of the planned duration of the interim district administrator position, and the impact of that discussion on the negotiation strategy to be adopted for the selection of a permanent district administrator, and discussion of appointment of a district administrator pursuant to Wisconsin statutes, nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub C. Do I hear that motion?
Salute.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, second.
Second.
By Mrs. Larson, is there any discussion? Here and now, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Gamble.
Yes.
Mrs. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen.
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Larson.
Aye.
And I say yes.
Motion carries seven zero, we'll go into closed session at eight forty-four, we'll take a more five minute recess. Okay, then we're back in open session at ten ten. Okay, item eleven, I mean, item twelve, there is no action to be taken from our closed session, so, item thirteen, future agenda items, we have election of the twenty seventeen, eighteen board officers on April twenty-sixth, and then we have the, our NSBA conference attendance report will now be moved to a May meeting, we have FAPSU Franklin Health Department update on April twenty-sixth, we have the high school community experience coordinator report on May tenth, and the Franklin Health Department anti-tobacco awareness poster awards on May tenth, and then I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gamble, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries, we are adjourned at ten eleven.